Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, August 5, 2020, School Committee meeting. I do, I know, we probably have a lot tuned in tonight as we are going through the, our plan, our reentry plan. And I'd like to openly thank Dr. Nash, Dr. Hendrickson's here, Mr. Ledoux, Mr. Pelzarsky, Mr. Quinn, and all the principals that were involved to write this plan. There've been so many volunteers, committee time and hours to go through and try to put together this reentry plan that best fits the needs of the community. Before we get going, we have changed up a little bit here, so I just want to make sure I introduce the entire committee. For the people at home that are watching this will be again, will be broadcast again over the town's website. So I'm the chairman, Daniel Cooten. To my left is Dave Canacchioli, Corey Burke, Palmina Griffin, and September Forbes. So that is your school committee. The names should be updated on the town's website along with our email addresses and if members hope, if members so wish, and I would put mine up there as phone number to get ahold of members as well, get ahold of the community. All right, so let's start out during the call order and then we have, from our, held over for my last meeting, we have our 2020, 21 subcommittees. Subcommittee announcements, our standing subcommittee policy, membership of seven, consists of Palmina Griffin and Dave Canacchioli. Personal negotiations, membership is of five, and so the school committee representatives are Dave Canacchioli and September Forbes. The school buildings and safety, the membership is five. School committee representatives are September Forbes and Corey Burke. District accountability and curriculum, membership of seven, Palmina Griffin and Corey Burke. And our newest one of diversity, equity, and anti-racism, the membership of that is 15, we'll be soliciting volunteers, and myself, Daniel Cooten, and Palmina Griffin will represent the school committee on that. As noted on all subcommittees, school committee chair and superintendent are ex-official members of all subcommittees, so they can feel free, they can attend all meetings, all meetings are posted and minutes are taken. Even if you're not on a subcommittee, feel free to sit, to sit in on the meetings. A lot what goes around in the background of how we get our information, conduct our business, a lot would go through a subcommittee class. All right. Next item, incident meeting for July 20, 2020, intend a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Forbes, we have a second.
A second, that motion.
Discussion. Any none, all favorites, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show five in affirmative, minutes pass. Our next item is, we do have a memo in our package from Mr. Ledoux, Business Administrator, regarding the remaining FY20 budget surplus, Mr. Ledoux.
Mr. Cooten, I'm in the committee. We ended the year with some monies that were identified probably back in June, some of which were used to, to balance the fiscal '21 budget. However, we have an additional $138,000 that is left over after everything has been settled. So at this time, I'm recommending that the school committee absorb, or excuse me, take the charges from the food service salaries, an additional $100,000, this is in addition to the $100,000 that were charged back in June. And what that will do is that'll put $100,000 in your food service revolving fund. That'll bring the balance as of '07-1 to $194,000 to start off the year with. And then, secondly, I had put in the memo to leave the remaining $38,000 for the town, which, what happens to that, that's then, becomes free cash to fund capital items for the, for the next year for fiscal '22. That's pretty much it. It's up to the committee, I mean, you can change the dollar figures if you want to give the whole $138,000 to the town for, for capital, that's certainly something you could do. But I certainly do not feel comfortable making this call without consulting the committee, obviously, to see what we would do with the year-end monies.
Thank you, open for discussion, board members. September.
How does the food service stand right now?
Right now, we have $94,000 in the account. I anticipated a pretty significant deficit, however, due to the food service program that we ran, we did bring in over those past few months about $20,000 per month. So that, in addition to the $100,000 that was transferred, leaves a beginning balance of what I estimate about $94,000.
Okay. So the significance, is there a need for the additional $100,000? Could we give part of that to?
You could do a part of it, oh certainly. At this point in time, with the uncertainty, given the upcoming year, it's, again, this is why I defer to the committee.
I mean, I know there's been some talk of the food service, food.
I think one of the things that we actually have to be concerned about with food service anyway, is the fact that we're not going to have maximum students in on a daily basis, and we're also going to be serving lunch very differently. So those two things alone are going to have an impact, no question about it. You know, obviously, there are other expenses that you'll hear us talk a little bit about this evening in, in general terms, but that's my, my concern is not having a maximum number of students. And in a best day, we were serving 200 students at the high school, for example, daily. Now we're going to potentially cut that in half into 100, 175 each in middle school and Barton, and I think 70 something or so at Chaffey. So when you cut that in half, then you can see, you still need the personnel, that's the thing that we looked at, we actually did that staffing redeployment in Patton today, and we still needed the personnel because we're delivering lunch a little differently to rooms and that, so.
Right.
So I wouldn't, I'd be cautious about that. I think $94,000 sounds like a lot until we get into a payroll month, and we start looking at payroll. The average payroll month for cafeteria is what, Justin?
I'd say roughly 20, 20 to 30,000, depending on the number of pay periods. No, just to put it in perspective, we usually end the year with about a $50,000 deficit. That's in a normal year, that's not running the, the food service program, excuse me, the summer food service program where we get reimbursed by the USDA, or just, just doing the normal, just normal way we run it.
Right. I mean, I think though, that that remaining balance of $38,000 is good faith back to the town, so I think that was a great suggestion.
I have a question for you. This $100,000, is this included, will we be feeding all students over the course of school year, meaning the students that are, that are in, if we go to off weeks, if we go to remote learning, will lunches still be provided for our students, similar to they were last time, where the grab and goes? Even though that we may be serving lunches in school, but there'll be a separate division for grab and goes?
Yes, sir. With the guidance that we've been given, is we have to provide lunches to all students, so that would be students working remotely, if you will, from home, where mom can come pick it up. And, secondly, in, in school, I know that DESI has applied to the USDA to continue the, the free lunch program, however, that has not been approved at this time. So from what we know today, we have to offer lunches to both those, those students at home and, and in, in the buildings. So with that said, we have looked at the staffing, and it does not appear we can, we're going to be reducing staff at this time, even though there'll be reduced capacity, 50% in the proposal this evening.
Okay. Secondly, how do we do on reimbursements from the time we are out from March, from March of last year, and then also the summer program? How are we doing on those reimbursements?
We have not submitted the July and August yet, however, for the good part of March, April and May, and June, we received about $20,000 per month on average. So we, we actually did really well, we did a lot better than we thought, we were serving approximately 150 lunches a day. And now that includes breakfast and lunch, so both of those are reimbursable. And to add to that, on Fridays, we were giving out for the weekend, so you get three, three meals to get to through Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So what happens is we're reimbursed for every meal that we give out.
And so do you feel in putting this $100,000 away, that come September, October, November, that we may not be getting reimbursed on a regular basis?
At this point in time, the, that USDA program ends, so for us, our application ends this Friday. And again, the, at this point, USDA is not continuing the program. DESI has requested, because it will make everyone's lives much, much easier when it comes to distributing food in schools, especially when it's free, because that takes out a lot of exchanging of cash or, or, you know, various things that, you know, just takes it off our plate, we don't have to deal with it. So we're hopeful that that happens, but at this point in time, they have not approved that.
So I, so I just want to be very clear in my positive vote and recommending this, it's not from any mismanagement of Oxford Public Schools, it is not of inferior lunch, mismanagement in services, it basically goes back to the federal government not reimbursing, and then we're feeding every child, and we're not being reimbursed from the federal government.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Okay. I just want to be, I want to be very transparent, and when the question comes up, it's like, $100,000, so what kind of budget are you running over there when, well now we have to take a hit out of the $100,000 budget, where capital items are, they're coming very, very tough, and now to back to.
At this point in time.
To feed kids, that the federal government's not upholding their end of the bargain.
Again, they could change, they could give us a decision next week and say yes, but at this point in time, they, they have not fudged on that.
So we have to make, we have to make sure our children.
And we have to make sure that the kids eat.
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions?
Are there any anticipated costs now that we have to like, package lunch differently and things like that? Have we looked into what that would cost us?
Certainly, at this point in time, we spent about, around $4,000 on additional carts and, what do I want to say?
Hot, cold?
There's a, there's a, covers that we have purchased for our racks, that, that keeps food insulated, if you will, it's hot and cold, it's a cover that's over there. So we're going to probably have $4,000 for the equipment that we've purchased so far. We have purchased trash rails, but that was more of a janitorial expense. However, they will be used for lunch, assuming kids are all eating in classrooms, we're going to need a trash rail separate from your wastepaper basket outside every room.
And like, based on, you know, the preliminary documents that we've been reading, it sounds like kids might eat in classrooms potentially or different spots, so I'm imagining they're not going to have a tray delivered to the classroom, I'm imagining it's going to be all like, prepackaged.
Right.
Correct.
So has there been an analysis of the cost for all that pre-packaging type supplies?
Parents texting me, they can't get access to the meeting, I'm not sure if there's a way, sorry.
Okay, access to the meeting.
I probably could let them in, but my computer died.
Oh, you want, here, you want mine?
You can get a phone number.
So at this point in time, I'm sorry, the.
No, I was just going to say like.
There's a phone number.
The anticipated cost for packaging food.
The difference between a styrofoam tray and the actual, the trays that we'd be using, that would be the, the ones that would close, I could see that in a restaurant, that has not been done, there hasn't been a cost analysis done between, the difference in. Not at this time.
And have we already ordered a whole bunch of styrofoam trays and things like that that are going to sit there that we're not going to use? Yeah.
We're going to go in a very brief process, that we're going to go right now and try and see if we can solve this, because I know there's, there are a lot of people who want to tune in tonight and be able to see what's going on in terms of, and I think this is an important piece, the food service, I know it wasn't advertised, it's probably secondary, but a lot of parents will be glad to hear what we're doing proactive for this, and then, secondly, we go into the plans. So Helen, before I'll set, and thank you, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Pelzarsky for putting up on this.
Do we have access to the phone number, Ralph?
I don't, but I, like, I'm going to find it on here and I'll shoot up a few phones.
Yes, just go to your calendar, it should be on your calendar, right?
It's right on the homepage.
But I got it if you want.
I'm sure I have it, yeah, I'm just switching over and out and getting a few cans, and then they'll spread it out.
Yep. They'll share social media, they'll share.
Is the video streaming live or no? It doesn't stream live?
No, it's no.
No, it's going on a delay tomorrow after town's turn.
Right.
Yeah, there are no requests.
I have the phone number right here. Should I say the phone number? Can they hear?
Well, they can't hear.
But Helen's using mine, and if anybody requests, you can let them in.
Yeah, but there's nobody. There's no request. Okay, I'll ask this particular one, she's got a whole big question, so why don't we continue and ask.
57 people.
Do I have 57 people in? Okay. All right, Mr. Pelzarsky, you handle that. And all right, as we, as we continue through here, Palmina, if you could please re-ask your question.
So my question is, have we?
Can you not hear out loud?
Yes.
There's a bunch of us trying to get in on the actual Google meeting, and it keeps letting us ask to join, waiting for someone to let everybody in. Exactly.
Try it again, because her computer was down. Log out of it.
It's telling everybody out, and I know there's a bunch of us.
Whoever set it up.
Well, Helen will be able to.
Justin's down.
There are no requests coming in.
So just resubmit your request. Tell them to resubmit, Justin.
Yeah, possibly try resubmitting the request.
Tell her her computer was down.
If you log out, log back in, it should come back in, it should be all right.
Yes.
So we got 57 on now. One person just went out and came back on.
Palmina, good.
So my quest, my question was basically, how much do we anticipate the cost being for packaging and things like that? So we haven't, based on your response, we haven't really looked into that just yet.
Correct. So this is, as I've said multiple times, a very dynamic situation.
Right.
So if we flashback to March, we were submitting our FREC bid orders.
Right.
And at that time, we were in the process, and we said, we're going to need so many styrofoam trays, assuming we're coming back in the, the same fashion. So I, we're currently working with FREC to modify that.
It's still not working.
So soon as we get a handle on it, and I can certainly update the committee, what the, the price difference is between the typical trays that we would get in, maybe like a takeout container.
Right. So we, there's like, unanticipated costs that might really hit our budgets.
Absolutely.
Everywhere.
And.
Forget the school lunch aspect.
Correct.
So holding on to some of these funds would be wise.
Right.
Okay. And then, if I may, Mr. Cooten, I mean, I'm in agreement in some respects about the free cash, like the money going back for capital items, but I know that our school has significant capital needs that we're like, trying to whittle away at, and some of them that we've been doing, like the modifications to our bathroom vanities and things like that to make things, you know, presentable for the kids, clean, making sure they have access to facilities like bathrooms that are like, you know, high-touch surfaces being the best that they can be and things like that. So in the past, when we looked at the bathrooms, we noticed, you know, over the years, that things are slowly getting worn down, because lots of kids kind of wear things down. And I know we're working on like, replacing rugs and things like that at our school, and so I know there's a lot of capital needs, I guess my only, my, my only request would be that if this money goes back, and I know our town has been very, very generous with us, especially the last few years, they realized that we might need that for future capital work ourselves, so that's all. We might want it back for capital. So that's all.
Yes, good question.
Is there a timetable on this, Justin? Like, if we approve the 100 tonight to move, can the 38 just stay dormant for now, and then we can come revisit it?
Correct, until the finance director tells me that the, the year is closed.
Right.
It's currently still open.
Right.
And it's a little bit delayed because of the COVID and.
So we essentially could approve the potentially 100 tonight to move over to food service, keep the 38 and change, or whatever it is, dormant for now, and then we can revisit it?
Correct.
Is that a possibility?
I don't want to give you a hard date, I, I mean, I'll try to wrap it up by the end of August, I don't know when she was going to tell me to close the year, I haven't had that conversation with her yet, but it's not going to expire this evening, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And I can certainly alert the committee if, you know, told otherwise, and we need to make a move on.
And the last thing that comes to mind is, coming up in the fall, we're supposed to put our capital request forward and like.
Correct.
Plan for our budget moving forward, so I guess maybe we could, you know, discuss that, 38,000 as a committee could go towards, you know, a lot of the future things that we need. So I know we're supposed to be proposing things, and that's probably on your long list of to-do's right now, because you've got so much happening, but.
Correct. So what happens is every, every town department, all of this, the surplus money that's left over, it all gets certified as free cash, it'll be a lump sum, if you will, that then the, the finance committee, once they receive all of the requests, they'll kind of, they'll go through and decide, okay, well, we're going to fund these, these projects. So I will be bringing before you folks, all of the requests that is compiled, and I'll depend upon you to prioritize which ones you want to put forward to the finance committee to fund. If that makes sense.
It does.
Any other questions? At this stage, I entertain a motion to transfer FY20 $100,000 into the food service fund account to, for participation throughout the 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Moving to second, further discussion. Any none? Roll call, vote, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canacchioli?
Yes.
And I'll go, yes, myself, five in affirmative, motion passes on the transfer. Just will do it, thanks.
That is all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, at this stage, I'm going to ask Dr. Nash, she reported to the school committee about our first draft reentry plan for blueprint for the 2020, 2021 year.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin this evening, I would just like to offer some thanks to a lot of people. First and foremost, the Oxford Public School Administrative Team, who have been working since probably prior to June 25th, when the initial guidance came out, and we started thinking about the realities of what a new school year would look like. Also, to members of our town groups, certainly our Board of Health, our town manager, our facilities people, who have been really gracious of their time and meeting with us and ensuring that we were all on the same page as to how we approach the safety and health. Particularly want to give a shout out to our eight planning teams and those team leaders. And also seated in the audience this, this evening is Amy Grenat, and we'd be lost without Amy. She's here this evening to explain one of the reasons why we chose a week, the schema of a week on, as opposed to days on, days off. But above and beyond that, from the very beginning, you know, any of us would call her, and certainly with her expertise and just not being our head nurse, but also in working on the town side, on the local side, and being ahead of the curve, has been extremely beneficial, and has really been very helpful for me in making some decisions, and certainly, I know, in ensuring that all of us think about the things that are critical, the paramount thing that we are looking at is really the health and safety of our staff and our students. So I would begin by just also reminding the committee and reminding the audience that this is a fluid plan, it's called a draft because that's what it is, it is a draft. And this evening, the sample schedules that we show you in particular are just that, they are samples. Some of the elements will change, there's no question. All of these need to be negotiated, and these are samples of what a hybrid day might look like. The committee this evening really needs to make some decisions if they're comfortable with making those decisions. At the last meeting, they voted for a hybrid model, they voted, you voted to start school after Labor Day, and you also voted on a phased in. So we have obviously adhered to that in developing this draft. But this evening, I would ask you to think about the areas that really at this point in time are very vital for us. First, how do you feel about having the two options, the way we have demonstrated them, i.e. the hybrid model, week on, week off? Are you comfortable with that? The way it will look in each building will, will go through an evolutionary process, it will evolve, so please don't get hung up in what it looks like right now. However, having said that, you will see that at the elementary level, we have asked to delay the day, the beginning of a day by an hour. That is something that you certainly should make some decision on this evening, or have some discussion about.
Point of clarification, Chair.
Please.
We, just so that we're all aware, we have not voted on a plan yet.
Correct.
The final plan, right.
Right. So it's, there's, just so people are understanding this that are watching, we have not as a committee voted on a plan.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay, just want that out there for the record. All right, thank you.
You have, you have voted on simply those three elements from the last meeting, but you have not voted on a plan, because this is the, the first time that you're seeing it. You also will be looking at some changes certainly in schedules. Those have been preliminarily agreed to at the secondary level, so I have a verbal commitment, so when I bring those forward to you, I would have been hesitant in saying to you, that's not, that's not something that, that is solid, but I feel comfortable in at least saying that the high school schedule change and the middle school schedule are two areas where we've had discussion and a verbal commitment from the union. So let me begin with one other comment, that this evening's presentation in the PowerPoint will really focus on the specific information around the models, because I think that's the most important thing that parents want to hear this evening. They want to know what does, what will learning look like in the fall? But I would implore people to really read the document, we have created a link, the document has gone out to all of our staff and all of our parents, we've created a link for feedback on this blueprint, that unfortunately, we're asking you to turn around very quickly, but you'll have that opportunity. And next week, we'll be scheduling two Q and A sessions on Tuesday and Thursday evening, one for parents and staff will get that information out to you. So any questions that aren't answered this evening, you'll have ample opportunity to continue to ask those questions as you learn more about it this evening. But the areas around the school safety protocols, transportation, school facilities, food services, student support services, and technology, I'm not going to go into any depth this evening. Please review that document, I think it's pretty detailed in giving you information, and you will also get more very specific information as we work out the logistics. So let me begin with the next slide. What guided us in developing this document, first and foremost, was the health, safety, and well-being of all of our school community, all of the individuals who make up our school community. That was the underlying principle for us. We also were guided by some things that happened last spring, I think every school district in the state is guided by some of the lessons we learned, particularly around remote learning, and how, how well we did with that. We also are very concerned about the equity, the equity of all of our students, but certainly those students who are in our high needs, high-risk categories. We recognize that in many instances, those students did not feel well in remote learning, and certainly will make every effort, as you'll see this evening, to talk about those special populations and how we intend to focus on them this year. We also have to recognize that this model, or any model that any district uses, has to allow for the fact that, needs to be flexible, that at any given moment, we could be moving between one model. So while the committee could vote this evening or in a few days, on a particular model, it could very well be that we could never implement that, particularly if the governor or if we have local issues with the virus, and we find that we have to move from whatever model of in-person learning that we may have to remote learning. It also builds on the strength that I think this district has, and that strength is that we were able last spring to offer any student and any family who needed a device, we were able to give that to them. To that end, I think we probably put out over 350 devices, and those individuals still have those devices, so they could use them this summer in some of the summer programs that we were running at the elementary schools. In the fall, our plan is that we want all students K-12 to have a Chromebook, so we have equity, and so that when the teachers are using a learning platform or anything else, that we have a. that we have a consistency across. So we're going to actually mandate that, if you will. And as some of you already know, on the committee, we were lucky enough to receive one of the competitive grants for a little over $60,000 that came in that additional money, that $25 million that was set aside for technology. So that will allow us to even augment the devices and some of the other things that we have indicated we need and not have to take that out of the CARES and EASR money. Next slide, please. We wanted to create certainly a plan in, in talking about how we educate students that address the challenges that our educators have, just moving between different models. If you are someone who has had to teach in a certain way, which is typical students in front of classrooms, and then all of a sudden, you're asked to do something very different, that is certainly a challenge, and that will continue to be a challenge. And I think that's, there are various ways now to address that as we move forward. That certainly can help and aid our educators. We also want to take into account that we have the needs of all. It's not just those who work in the community, but it certainly is our community at large. It's our families. It's certainly our staff and students. And we wanted to build in some time to make sure that we had the opportunity to engage all of our stakeholders. We've had a pretty good representation in the planning process. As I say, this process continues until eventually a final document is approved. And we wanted to ensure that we found various ways for our, all stakeholders to at least have the ability to give feedback, whether it's in person or online or through a survey. And I really want to take the opportunity to thank the parents, because when we surveyed our parents initially, I was shocked at how quickly they responded. And a couple of those surveys this evening are embedded in this presentation. And of course, our, one of the most important things is to focus on what we do and what we ask all of our teachers to do, and that is to teach the curriculum. That is to teach to the standards in the state of Massachusetts. And that has not been an easy task. We are going to have to identify the learning gaps, we know, early on in the fall. We're going to have to figure out how do we address those. We certainly have some programs in place that we started this summer, but I think that's going to be a challenge for all school districts as we move forward. And particularly, if we have kind of a yo-yo approach in that we have some days in and some days out because something happens in a school or a building of the state. Next slide. So I wanted to give you a quick overview of our planning process. I know the print is a little bit small, so I apologize, but we had really three pieces to this. The initial planning came for us as a group, as I said, right at the end of this, what would have typically been the end of the school year. And then, while we were all awaiting with bated breath DESI's guidance that came out on June 25th, it gave us really a blueprint for how we were to move forward. Our reopening work began in earnest when we started talking about the different models. Started talking about the challenges that these models presented to a school district and started talking about this in, generally as an administrative team and thinking about that, but also we formed our planning teams in those eight areas, ranging from safety and transportation to student supports to teaching and learning, to really delve a little bit deeper into what we call the essential questions. And for every essential question, there was another question. And just when you thought you had a solution, I know the OEA president and I were chairing one of the committees together, and every time we thought we had an answer to the personnel and staffing, we had another new question. And I think that's the challenge in general with what we're doing with public education. You also know that we conducted the space feasibility study. That study was brought to the school committee on 7/20. It was at that meeting that I made the recommendation that while we could fit all of our students in, 100% capacity, with three foot, with a three-foot distance, three feet distance, it was not my recommendation. To me, that is the minimum. It is not, if you read the language in the document, it clearly says DESI encourages a six-foot. So why would we do anything less than that? And in order to do that, we would not be able to have all of our students in on a daily basis, which led us to a hybrid model, which is a blended learning model, as you know. So the next part of that is really the reentry plan blueprint, where this evening, you have a draft document. And then from that document, we certainly will solicit feedback from both the school committee as well as all of the other stakeholders, revise it and finalize it, and hopefully have a plan in place. But I am sure that it will continue to evolve to some degree. The bottom explains kind of a little bit more detail, so I'm going to not go through that. Next slide. So for those who have not memorized this slide yet, and that may be some parents out in the community, this is probably the most prolific cut and pasted slide out of all of the DESI documents. This is the continuum of fall reopening. And this came out in the initial June 25th initial guidance document. School districts were asked to plan for really three types of models of learning. An in-person learning model with new safety requirements. Those included the requirements around masks for students in grades two through 12, requirements around spacing or distancing, three to six feet, requirements around hygiene, and I'm missing one other, which someone will remember, I'm sure, the fourth requirement. But those requirements were a part and parcel of the planning process for districts and when they conducted their space feasibility studies. The second model in the continuum is a hybrid model, which is really a blended model. We'll be talking about that quite a bit this evening. A blended model of learning, where students are in session for some days for in-person learning, and then they are out of session in, at home, in a remote learning environment and learning remotely. The third model is a total remote learning model. And I'd like to define that in kind of three ways, because there's remote learning, as we did last spring, when all school districts were closed down and everyone was at home, and everyone was learning remotely. When we talk about remote learning as part of a hybrid model, it may look very different. And I want to emphasize that. So it may not be the same at all. So we need to think, forget about what remote learning looked like in March. I would say, put that aside, and now think a little differently when you hear the word "remote." Whether it's the remote learning academy that you elect, or whether it is hybrid learning, which has remote in it, it will be different than what we had in the spring. Also, we want to recognize that there are special populations of students that DESI has indicated and that we certainly knew ahead of time or before they even indicated to us. Our high-needs students, particularly our students in substantially separate programs, that need to be in school daily. Our ELL students, our students who are in foster care and homeless, and our integrated preschool students are all those high-risk groups that we are looking at bringing back on a daily basis as we start this fall. So I want to move to a slide and take a few minutes. And before you do that, let me just give it a little bit of a lead in. As many of you know, the guidance that came out on the June 25th was based on medical evidence and medical documentation from experts in the state of Massachusetts who worked with DESI to develop and recommend an initial plan for schools, which includes these three models. And so I want to show you the video. It's only a few minutes, not even a few minutes, I think, that these doctors made in talking about the issues of children going back to school for in-person.
Might take a minute, though.
Okay. I'm glad it's you and not me. The arrow did come up. This is available on YouTube. All you have to do is type in M A D E S C doctors, and you'll see their back-to-school message. So in case we can't play it. No? Not working?
You can wait for it to carry you.
Well, I would simply say then, please take a few minutes and go to YouTube, and you will find, and if you just type in the search for M A DESI doctors, you'll see it.
The little icons at the bottom here, right there.
Yeah, that just gives us, gives us the next slide. All right, Justin.
Could you just give us a quick overview of what they were trying to do?
Sure. Both of them represented, and I think one of them was one of, I'm trying to remember, Dr. Fisher, I believe. Talk about their challenges in looking at all of the information, the medical information, and making the decisions of the recommendations to DESI that they felt that with safety precautions, we could bring, we could bring students back, not knowing whether our school districts could bring all of their students back, but they felt that if we went ahead and practiced all of the... No?
All right, Dr. Nash.
Okay. If we practiced the safety and health guidelines, their recommendations, that we potentially could bring our students back. So that was, and both of them, I believe, I don't think that Dr. Fisher was there. I think it was, can't remember. He was also there, but, but their bottom line was that, in looking at the medical research and looking at the studies that were out at that point in time, they were comfortable recommending that. So if you would go to the next slide, I apologize. We needed to think when we were drafting the plan of really some significant considerations in trying to, trying to make sure that we thought in a very broad sense about all of the elements that need to go into the plan. Number one, again, was the safety of our students and staff and trying to maintain the six-foot distance as the safest for all. We also needed to understand that any plan, any proposal could change on, on a dime, and that we needed to make sure that we had some opportunities to have practice, if you will, in both. And so thus, one of the recommendations this evening is a phased-in opening. Will give us really the opportunity to see how well we can do with one model before, when, and if we can move into the other model. The third thing was the fact that we recognized that all of our students have been away for a period of time, and that we needed to make sure that any plan that we created provided time for the social, emotional well-being of students early on, through some of the orientation time that we'll spend, but also some of the time later on, either even in distance learning, where teachers felt that it was okay for them to spend a little bit more time on the social, emotional well-being of their students than to get right back into academics. I think that's a critical piece. We also realized that we needed to be pretty flexible in recognizing that even for our special needs learners, that there's great flexibility for them, which some of them don't deal well with, in how we deliver our services. And certainly, I know that Dr. Henry Sean has been looking at that over the last few months. What other ways can we use to deliver services to our students who will continue to receive their service no matter what plan we're in? We also realized that no matter what we develop, that the plan's going to be flexible, because there are still so many unknowns out there. First and foremost, we need to make sure that we can accommodate the schedule changes that we made. We need to make sure that the times make sense. We want to make sure that when we look at any kind of changes, we have to see the impact that makes on transportation. And we also know that all of this, the particulars of the different types of schedules, if you will, our days in the life of a student, all need to be bargained. So when we talk about a hybrid learning model, or a remote learning model, or a remote learning academy, we need to really, we need to recognize that those could also change. We also wanted to find ways that were important for us, particularly for us as an administrative team, thinking about reaching students both in live situations, synchronous situations, as well as asynchronous situations. And how do we get better at doing that? We recognize that particularly at younger grades, that there's a need for them to see their teacher, to see their teacher often, to have contact with their teacher, both as instructional time, but also as other time, more informal. So we wanted to figure out, how do we do that? And then certainly recognizing that this entire plan, any model, is a total change for a classroom teacher. So you have just reinvented their entire world. As we're reinventing public education on a larger level, they're reinventing their classrooms. And we have to take time to recognize the impact that that makes. And if you really want to do it successfully, you need to embed some time for them to be able to do that. So that, to me, was another important piece. Next slide. So I wanted, before I begin getting into the nitty-gritty of really the models themselves, talk a little bit about a disclaimer and say to you that certainly, we're going to modify this. There's no question. I'm sure that we're going to go away and come back with a plan that's a little bit different than what it is. But there could be some things that we don't even know about that will have an impact on this. Certainly changes in COVID in the next month. That could flip everything that we decide to do. And obviously, at this point in time, we know that there are other things that can happen. Some of them are things that we control and others of them are not. So I'd like to quickly just run through those. Certainly getting support from a local level, from your school committee, is critical for us. Feedback from our stakeholders. We hope that we will have some successful negotiations. I look forward to those with the OEA to work through those models. They have been extremely collaborative up to this point, so I have no reason to suspect they wouldn't be. But we also have to look at the reality of budget, the implications of all of the things that we are proposing on a budget, regardless of how much money that you get from a federal or state level, that there are budgetary implications along the way, and staffing considerations, knowing whether or not all your staff will be here, and what happens if some of your staff get ill, as well as additional staff or personnel that you'll hear us talk about this evening. We also hope that the very people that make us operate, our students and families, are going to support this. And we recognize, I recognize, the challenge that this has to families. There's no one other than I who want to see every single student in school every day. I recognize the importance of that. Unfortunately, we're... Unfortunately, we are not at a safe, it's not safe or healthy for us to bring all of our students back in. And that's the simple fact. And until that time comes, then I think we need to understand that all of us need to be flexible in what education is going to look like. And then certainly, we are continuing to receive ongoing guidance from local, both the local officials and also our state officials. So I wanted to quickly just remind people about the surveys that we took and the results of those surveys, just a few slides, because they do impact this evening when we talk about the models. When we surveyed our parents back in July, I think it was, we asked them a preference for a learning model. And on this slide, you'll see that 52%, not an overwhelming number, it wasn't 80%, but a majority. Majority of our parents said that they would prefer an in-person learning model with the safety restrictions that we needed to put in place. And for us, that, for me, it meant that certainly, they were looking at making sure that all students and all staff would be as safe as possible, and i.e. the six-foot distance. We had about 24% said they would prefer a hybrid model, and 17% prefer a remote learning model. The next slide. We also asked parents, if we were going to implement a hybrid model, which schema, which of the two variations would you prefer? And 53% said the week-on, week-off model. So one of the reasons why we selected it was that our parents said to us that that's the model that they preferred. 34% said days on, days off, and then the rest are kind of smaller percentages. We also asked our parents whether they wanted to see school reopening phased in. And we did define that for them to some degree, so they had a sense of what that was. And overwhelmingly, they said yes. And also, you'll see that our staff felt the same way. We surveyed our staff, and you'll see the responses about which learning model they preferred were not, we didn't have a majority. So 31% said they preferred in-person, 28% said hybrid, 24% said remote. So it wasn't really a simple, you know, this is, this is the... It wasn't really a simple, you know, this is, this is the model, whereas the parents told us, a majority of them, that there was one. We also asked our staff, if we were to implement a hybrid model, which model would you like? And they also picked the week-on, week-off. So, another reason why the majority of our staff and our parents seeking that model. And then we asked them about phasing in, and again, overwhelmingly, they said yes to a phased-in model.
Could you, you alluded to it the first time, but could you describe what they saw or what their interpretation of phased in was?
Sure. It had similar to what we talked about, where there'd be some training for staff at the very beginning, some time typically where school would not be starting as early as we might have thought. And that was prior to having notification from the commissioner that he was building an additional 10 days and decreasing the school year. We said that there would be some orientation time, getting used to, acquainting everybody to the changes, and that we would phase in our models of learning, that we may start with one model, but change to another model. Next slide. So, here are the two learning model options that I'm presenting this evening. They are hybrid or remote. So, our proposal this evening is to provide for parents the opportunities to participate either in a hybrid model or in a remote model of learning. Just to quickly go over the difference between the two, our students would be divided in a hybrid model, you divide your school building approximately in half into two cohort groups. We are working on those cohort groups now. The two key ingredients that principals are working on is, one, keep families together, try to make sure that we have parity, so that our class sizes are, when we're cut in half, let's say we have 10 and 10, as opposed to maybe having, you know, five and 15. And thirdly, there are cohort groups that it makes sense should be together, excuse me, that will be confusing. There are categories of students that we need to kind of put together in a cohort group. And so, we started to identify those. Some of those could range from special ed students who are receiving additional support services with a paraprofessional, and it would make sense that if that paraprofessional is dealing with two students, that they're in the same cohort group. Also, it might make sense on a high school level, that you take all of your AP students in a particular class of maybe 12 students, and you put that in cohorts, so you can run those, those students and make sure that they get all of their classes. So, we're looking at that, and that's what we talk about. We also are proposing the schema of the variation of the week-on, week-off model, which is Monday through Thursday for students in person. So, for the in-person learning week, students would be here Monday through Thursday. On Friday, all students will be engaged in remote learning. We already will have those students who are in remote learning, but also all students. That will allow us to do a couple of things, well, a number of things, but first and foremost, before we flip the session and bring our cohort B group in on the following Monday, it will allow us to really get in and thoroughly clean those buildings. It will allow some time for our staff to do the preparation that they'll need to do to flip their instruction, so that they have preparation by the end of the day, everything is ready for the group going out and is posted, or however we're going to do it, for the group going out for remote learning the following week. For this, and that's, we're going to talk more deeply about hybrid learning, so this is kind of the big picture right now. And for those parents who feel uncomfortable or who feel that their child just should not be coming back at this time, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, about who Remote Learning Academy might be suited for. But certainly, this is a decision that parents will make, but for those parents who feel that they would like to not have their student participate, their child, in any type of in-person learning at this time, then they have the option of participating in remote learning full-time, five days a week. And we're calling it Oxford Public Schools Remote Learning Academy, just so, so not to be confused with remote learning. That's really for students and families who simply elect at this point in time, they do not want to return to school, and they do not want to return to the option of hybrid. Primarily, however, it is an independent and self-directed model, and we'll talk about that in more detail. And there would be potentially opportunities for our students who engage in this to have live synchronous learning and also some asynchronous learning. But again, we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later on. Next slide.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Kelly. If you could just go back to that last slide, if you wouldn't mind. So, again, tonight, we're tasked, potentially tonight, to vote on either a hybrid model or a full district remote model. So, could you talk to us a little bit about the full remote model, what that looks like?
Sure. Can I hold on? It's coming up in a few minutes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. So, I just want to kind of summarize, hybrid from a hundred-foot perspective. The proposal this evening looks a little bit different in, in our schools, and there are some changes that will happen in our proposal for hybrid learning. So, I want to take across, if you read across, can you lower that slide so they can just see the school? You can. Oh, okay. All right. So, all students, K-12, we divide into two cohort groups. And the example is that if you were in Cohort A, you would participate in, in-person learning Monday through Thursday of, of a week, while Cohort B would be at home, participating in remote learning. The cohorts would then flip the following week, and Cohort B would come in for live learning, and Cohort A would go out for remote learning. So, that's across the board. We are not recommending that at a certain level, we're going to do remote for this group, hybrid for this group, maybe remote for another group, or grade level. So, across the board, we're recommending a hybrid model that looks the same with respect to what I just described. All students will be remote on Friday for a specified period of time for us to, again, that's part of the negotiations that we need to go through to determine what that will look like for all students. Again, that gives us the time to come in and, and clean the buildings before the new group comes in on Monday. However, at the very bottom, you'll see that there are some changes with respect to what we call our schedule or day. At both Chaffee and Barton, the school day will start an hour later. And you'll see in a minute, when we give you a sample schedule, of the rationale for doing that. At the middle school, the six-day period will become five periods, longer blocks. The start of the school day and the end of the school day will be the same at the middle school. Nothing changes about that. The only change that we're, that we're proposing this evening is to delay the start by one hour at both elementary schools. At the high school, the school day for students will remain the same, 7:15 to 1:45. But we are, we have proposed that the seven-block period that currently is in place be replaced with what we call an alternating block, modified block day of four periods on an orange day, periods one through four on an orange day, and periods five, six, seven, and four again on a black day. One through three, 90 minutes each, period six, period four, excuse me, 60 minutes. Same thing on the other day. So, students will be in seven periods of classes alternating A, B day, oh, excuse me, better say orange, black, because it'll be confusing with Cohort A and Cohort B. One of the reasons why this was important to look at, both at the middle and high school level, is to try to minimize mobility of students. And at the high school level, currently with a seven-period day, they move six times. And so, one of the recommendations clearly from DESI is to limit mobility. I know, Amy, you may want to jump in a little bit on that, because I know that the mobility of students is critical for tracing purposes.
Right.
Please, come up, yes. Welcome, and thank you for taking time.
Thank you. I believe, so, in terms of, in DESI, and they pretty much align with the CDC as well for most of the protocols that, if you've read through any of that, to minimize lots of kids in the, in the hallway. So, with Dr. Nash, also, we're talking about staggering bells as well. So, certain classes go, and then two minutes later, another bell rings, or however they do it. So, the idea is to limit lots of students in the hallways, switching classrooms in other areas where they congregate.
Thanks.
Any other question?
Yep, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Any questions for, for Amy.
I thought we could do some other things.
Yes.
We'll talk to you later. Okay. I'll be back.
Thanks, Amy.
Feel free to stay up there. Feel free to stay there.
Okay, maybe I will.
So, just to reiterate, in a hybrid model, we, in a large sense, we divide a building in half to cohort groups. We alternate those cohort groups with in-person and remote learning. Again, recommendation this evening is to use an hour at the beginning of the day for elementary schools, for our staff, to engage in, in remote teaching. You'll see that. And then the change in the two schedules. But if you go to the next slide, I'll talk about some of the components of in-person learning. So, when we, when we talk about in-person hybrid, this is what you'll see. First of all, we'll maintain in classrooms the distance of six feet, it's six feet edge of seat to edge of seat, but probably will be a little bit more, if you will, when you look at some of these classrooms that are larger, you're going to find that we'll remove all of the desks, and you'll probably see somewhere between, gentlemen, I think it's 10 to 12 desks in a classroom. Our class sizes roughly, as you know, are around 22 to 24 on average across the district. So, you'll see when you walk in a classroom, 10 or so desks strategically placed six feet apart, and it'll be a very different-looking classroom, all students facing forward. And wherever else possible, certainly, we want to maintain the six feet, but three feet minimum, certainly when they're passing in the hallways with their mask on. Lunch in classrooms maintains the six-feet distance. We know that we have some students certainly who will need to have lunch somewhere else if they have life-threatening allergies, and we will provide space for them in the cafeterias, which are not being used at this point in time for students for lunches. A typical class size in a cohort group would be 10 to 12 students. I'm sure every single teacher would tell you that that would be an ideal class, however, please know that the other half of their class is in remote. Our outdoor spaces will be utilized. We certainly will use outdoor spaces for learning, for recess, and the grade levels appropriate, infant mask space. I would also say that some of the additional courses that have been identified as courses where there's a lot of respiration, like music and dance and band, may very well be held outside for a good part of the year until the cold comes in, because their guidelines require a 10-foot distance. The school day at Chaffee and Barton will start an hour later and dismiss at the regular time. The middle and high school start and end times are unchanged, and we will stagger passing times, particularly at the secondary level, particularly at the high school. Remember that at the middle school, we also have teams, and so, again, we don't have that same flow of traffic that we would typically have, but we will stagger those times also.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Just trying to go back to that slide. So, is it for lunch, is that high school, age two in middle school, we're going to have kids in classrooms?
Yes.
So, when do teachers get their lunch break, contractual lunch breaks?
Within that timeframe. They can...
So, they have to monitor kids and have their lunch?
No.
So, who watches the kids in classrooms either?
In some instances, it will be our monitors that we're recommending to hire, right?
There's also guidance out there now that says if you space students eight feet apart, you can have internal mask breaks.
Yes. Right. Yep. Okay, excellent, thank you. So, here is a sample. And again, I say it's a proposed, it's, first of all, it's a sample of what an AM, what the schedule may look like at Chaffee School, but it is a proposed schedule. And again, I would caution you that this needs to be negotiated, but you'll see why we are recommending that we delay the start of the school day to an hour later. In the sample of the kindergarten schedule, you'll see that the cohort, the group that is remote receives direct instruction at the beginning of the school day. So, from approximately 8:50 to 9:30, and again, this is a sample, the teacher of that, of those students would be directly teaching a class, her remote learners. That's the reason for the delay. We struggled with, could we potentially do something with our students who are in person? But the reality was, if you have five sections, as we do in kindergarten, you would need to have five people to be able to take those students and do something with them for that time that was meaningful, engaging. And the reality is, we don't have those on an ongoing, regular basis to be able to do that, because those cohort groups would have to stay separate and together. We wouldn't want to co-mingle them, even though two groups of 25 may not be too large for a gym class, that's not what you really want to do at this point in time. And we knew that we couldn't do that. I know that Mr. P. and Mr. Quinn went through all of the staff that they had, and when you really start looking at the adjustment council, that you might be able to pull a building principal or an assistant principal on an ongoing basis, knowing where we are, we really felt that that was not the best, the best model to use. And so, therefore, the only other way for us to cull out some time to have direct teaching in addition to any other synchronous teaching that the classroom teacher may want to do with the remote learners during the rest of the day, we wanted to specifically, at the younger grades, make sure that on a daily basis, there was contact between their classroom teacher and them. That was really important, and particularly somewhere at the beginning of a day. We felt that that was something that those students needed. And then the rest of it is a typical day in an elementary school with academic blocks, lunch breaks, specials. In many instances, we'll probably, the specials will either be the special art music or whatever coming to the classroom, or we've also begun to identify that, for example, if a student is going to go to, quote, "the art classroom," that they will carry with them their bag of their own supplies that they would need, that would be single-student identified supplies. So, we started to have those discussions, and I know do some potential purchasing of that. The schedule at grade one...
Mr. Burke, question?
Sorry, Dr. Nash.
Yep.
And if you would prefer us to wait till you're done to ask questions, I have a question about this particular piece, so I want to talk to you now about it. I guess I have a concern that, you know, kids are already coming week-on, week-off, so they're only coming four days a week. And now, we're also taking another hour off of each of those days for these in-person, for the in-person learning. I guess I would, I don't know if this is for the elementary school admin, or if you want to address it, but was there talk about the students being in the class on time, being able to do, I know in kindergarten classrooms, a lot of time, there's center work. Obviously, it couldn't be done in groups, but individuals could be working on centers. You know, we have teachers who will pull small groups of kids all the time, and that at-home cohort could be a small group that the teacher's working with, while the other students are working on, on other center-based projects, or those type of things. I'm just, I'm really concerned with the amount of time. And you think about our, our families too, who now, trying to get to work and have to wait, and they're, I'm assuming their students aren't being picked up till, I would say, what, 9:00?
And how related, right.
9:15, or whatever it is.
Sure.
9:30? So, I guess that, that part of the plan concerns me, and I just, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the thought process behind what could or could not happen in the classroom at that time with the, with the students that would be in person.
Mr. P., do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Absolutely. My understanding, that, that came out of your committee from, the recommendation was that there needed to be...
Mr. P., just come up, please.
Yeah, at least two items.
Yeah, I think they can spread out.
At least two times a day.
Wear a mask. Wear a mask, but we should be in public buildings. Oh, you're saying you could wear a mask and speak if you would want to?
At least two times a day. There was supposed to be a reach-out where the teacher in the school was making some connection with the child. So we were asked to create schedules to do that. And the only way to feasibly do it was to do it when their children weren't there. So we tried to come up with a morning block, but we can't do that without coverage for teachers unless the kids came late. So that was the...
Could you address, I think the question that you also asked, Mr. Burke asked, was the difficulty of a classroom teacher, kindergarten one, trying to have their in-person learners there while they're teaching the remote learners? Because we did talk about that. So the challenges for that.
So it's hard for me, I completely agree. So, okay, like I completely agree, having that piece built in was not originally what we were designing. We were designing a five-day schedule for, according to the surveys. And again, none of this is ideal. Nobody even wants to be here tonight, especially you folks. So the five-day on, five-day off after the, after the folks, you know, picked, surveyed out and said that. So we created that. Then we realized that we needed, the best that we could come up with was a four, already knowing that that was going to, you know, really be difficult, without a doubt. Then added on to that was a piece about a connection that a teacher must make at least once, possibly twice a day during the time that students are home. The ones who are not on cohort, if you're in cohort A and you're in school, the students in cohort B need to have connections with the families. So my understanding was that was something that came out of committee and we were requested to create the schedules. So, you know, we scripted it together as best we could. It can work at the middle and high school because they can have some block scheduling. And, you know, even if the, you know, we are still, even today, we had a math training today, we talked about how kids could be videoed in while the math teacher was creating that and doing that lesson online. Kids could, she could say, you know, hey, at 9:30, I want everybody to be ready. We're going to have 10 of you in front of us and 10 of you rocking it at home. So that's, you know, but again, nothing we can do tonight is, is set in stone without the permission of the unions and the agreements that need to be made, so.
So I mean, you talked earlier about the unions giving the verbal on the middle school and high school schedules. Have they had input into the elementary schedule?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, they did.
The elementary schedule is also passed by the union?
No, no. We're still discussing it.
Okay.
All right. But let me also add one point too. Remember that when you go into the guidelines that came out from DESI on July 24th with respect to remote learning, you must make sure that regardless of whatever aspect of remote learning, that you have teacher time, contact time. It's not just about saying they're remote and therefore I can send you work to do. So we're trying to cull that out. How do we best do that? This is not by any means what we wanted to do. But when you look at an elementary schedule with one teacher all day and you look at the high school schedule now with block, we can cull out time out of a 90-minute period and basically negotiate if that, this is going to happen in that 90 minutes with those remote learners. We just couldn't do that.
Right. For us, the key was we didn't have the, I mean, we have art, music, PE in my, but that's during the teachers allotted special, you know, that's their prep period. So that would, we couldn't do that and utilize that as their piece. So we had to create a non, there had to be, and then we actually are asked, to tax ourselves a little further because if the teachers are supposed to be in their rooms, we need to place those other students somewhere else within the building. So we're trying to figure that out.
I guess I would ask, in, in normal days, you would have moments where your kindergarten teachers, first-grade teachers are working with small groups of students and there are other groups of students off doing their own work.
Absolutely. That's our lives, that's, yes.
That's all the time. So I would imagine that hour in the morning could be your teacher is connecting with those remote students while the other students are in the classroom doing some other work.
I think after three or four weeks...
Absolutely. Absolutely. It takes kindergarten more than that to build a routine.
After we've got the train and drinking the Kool-Aid, absolutely. It's going to take a few weeks to get them there.
Yeah. Okay. Just something I would like to see kind of looked a little further at because I think that's a big stress on families to say, four days a week and less than an hour now.
Well, we understand that. But I think part of the, you know, part of the rationale was the, the need to have daily one-on-one time with this group, not to put them in with the other group at this point in time and say, okay, everybody jump in case. We're not saying that that's not going to happen, but how do we make those connections daily with those two groups of kids, knowing that for the most part, for that week, that group is going to be on their own with some daily contact if we're lucky, but that's it. But not a block of time. And that was my concern with elementary students in particular, that I've got to get teacher contact in there. And while I don't disagree with you, I would also suggest that if you, you know, when you start talking about juggling two groups for a classroom teacher in an elementary in a K-1 or environment, well, it's not impossible. And they do that when they have centers. It looks a little different because when you have centers, every kid's in that room with you. These 10 kids are now somewhere else. They're not here. And that virtual environment is very different than when you have 20 kids that you can create centers in your room. It's just different. So that's the, you know, that's what we were trying to grapple with. How do we best do that? And I recognize that difficulty of now it's an hour later. We are looking at the potential of offering some type of educare or something for parents who have that, you know, work difficulty. I've got to leave my, you know, I can't, I can't stand, stay at home. I just can't do it. So believe me, you know, it's a tug and a pull with no perfect answer either way. You know, you're just not super comfortable with it. So I hear you.
Ms. Scott Gillis?
Was this potential some discovery? We just talked about 138,000 that we had. Surplus, was there talk about hiring three or four paraprofessionals to support, you know, Mr. Burke's idea? Because I know we, I was part of a conversation that was similar to that, trying to connect both the at-home and the in-person learners at the same time.
Right.
Not for full days. Ideally, that'd be great if you could get them in, but to some capacity. So was there any talk about supporting through paraprofessionals who could kind of be overseeing kids who are in the classroom while the teacher is off remotely?
Then you have an equity issue. And I'm going to, I'm going to be a little bit of a devil's advocate if you don't mind, Mr. ...
Sure.
I am strongly opposed to the equity of someone who is a paraprofessional, who's not a certified teacher, taking half a group of students and being with them and then having a certified teacher over here. I think it really is a very, much of an equity issue for us to try to, to try to figure out how that can happen. I'm not saying that the para can't go in and assist, which is what they do, but they certainly can't lead a lesson. So that still means that that group is getting something that this group isn't. And I recognize that that happens in remote learning too. You know, I realize that there's no perfect answer, but can we do that? Do we have the funds to do it? We can't use this money because that money is earmarked. It can't be moved into the general funds to be used.
Correct. So when we talk about transferring prior-year money, we're not actually transferring money. We're transferring the expenditures from the food service budget into your general fund to eat up that money and then it leaves it in the food service. And that's all you can really do. You don't have a revolving fund really that I can take, that can be used for instructional aids specifically. Maybe, however, at the same time, we haven't 100% earmarked all of our grants. So we have two grants that are coming. We're in the process of working on one right now. However, we have not earmarked all of that money. So everything's still on the table. There's not, I'm not going to say, no, we have money available, it just hasn't been earmarked yet. So that's certainly an idea we could, we could look at.
But the proposal also includes earmarking bus monitors, safety and health monitors, remote learning supervisors, and four custodians, even though the custodians, we're looking at funding that out of our regular budget. But just those other three easily eat up close to anywhere between 6, 550 at a low to $600,000 if we were to hire the numbers that we need. So I don't know how much we're going to have, you know, left in that for hiring. I would love to be able to hire additional teachers.
Right. Well, that's, I'm getting at that. Mr. Pelzarski, K-1, how many students total?
Say it one more time.
In K-1, how many students total? We're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about this, that extra hour.
About 186, according to our current enrollment, really low, lowest we've had in years.
So 186 divided by two, you're talking about 90, right? 90, 95.
In-person, in one place.
If you go week on, week off, roughly 9, 9, 100.
On the lowest in the school right now in the district. That's not including preschool, I'm sorry. I don't include my 50-plus preschools.
But still, we have 90 to 100 coming in per week.
Right.
So that now you're talking about distancing and class size and all that. That's a lot of teachers.
Yeah, you need 10, well, you need 10.
W. staff.
If you wanted to, you know, we have five and five, five sections of each. So you could, yeah, if you wanted to, to have two full-time teachers up, you wanted to put a paraprofessional in, then it's a different model. Then it's not the same.
Okay, let's move on. Pal, and then...
So I know I'm going to be like the controversial, maybe unpopular person for saying this, but I wrote Dr. Nash an email. I copied the chair on it. I didn't share it with the rest of the committee because we can't deliberate or speak to each other, but I had a very uncomfortable feeling after our last meeting in regards to having those monitors and spending such a large amount of money on having different individuals come into our schools that we'd have to contact trace, that are coming from where, that we do not know, working with our kids, that potentially don't have the training and the expertise of teachers. And I'll be very frank and honest, over the years, the most complaints that I've heard from parents and children, even my own, have been from the contact that they have from aides at, you know, for the recess or for lunch, that don't necessarily have that personal connection with our kids. They come into the building for a short period of time. They might not know every child. They might not know their name. They might not know if they get certain services. No fault of their own. They're, they're just in the building for such a brief point of time every day. If we're concerned about social, emotional learning and health of our kids right now in particular, we need professionals that know our kids day in and day out, not for a few hours, not monitoring their behavior in the hallway, saying, hey, you, if they don't really know a kid as they walk because they don't know their name, they don't know who they are, they haven't been with our kids for years. I don't know if those people are going to get the same level of respect from our kids, like, you know, kids are kids. And so when I think of the big chunk of change, money, that we're going to be spending in these positions, I do think of like ESPs and different support staff and people that can go in and maybe take that hour, like you were saying, with those kids and maybe run a center because the teacher plans out the day and says when the kids walk in for the morning, they're doing a warm-up or they're doing something. And then the teacher can be doing that remote instruction for an hour. I think that is kind of a, you know, a clever thing, but we should have the kids on task. We should have the kids in the building. Kids have to get in the building on time. We have 40%, we're cutting our children's education to 40% for a whole school year and 60% is out there where they're learning at home. And we'll be very honest, I'll, again, I have four kids. I know some of us, other committee members have multiple kids and large families. I'm personally going back to work full-time, so is my husband. We're both educators. I don't know where my kids are going to go. I know that's going to be the common flight of everybody in this community. We want our kids to get the best possible education and not for 40% of the week, you know, possibly not for the full time. And then the other 60% is remote when parents struggle, kids struggle. So as much time on learning as we could possibly have would be really beneficial. And to take a large amount of money to put people in the hallway to monitor kids, I would really like our union to, I mean, we're going to have to think creatively. I know it's going to have to be bargained. I know it's going to be, have to be discussed. You know, I know some districts, honestly, every teacher does a duty. They have stepped it up for years. It's a lot. It's, it's an amazing thing to be asking of our educators. It's a huge sacrifice of their time. But those are the schools, and if you look at the research, that have those cultural connections with the kids, that have better social, emotional connections, that test highly on like, if you look at the Metro West Health Survey, for example, there's a lot of communities that have kids that do better and want to come to school because they have those more personal connections that happen in the hallway, that happen at lunch, that happen at passing time, that our teachers might not be having the opportunity to have. So we have unprecedented times where we need to kind of like reset everything. Maybe we reset that piece and save a lot of money and give our kids a lot more. And it would be a big sacrifice for our teachers, but maybe we could think of creative things like stipends or something else. I don't know. But still put more of the money to, time on learning.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Gillis. I just wanted to comment on Dr. Nash. By no means was I implying that the paraprofessionals should be teaching, so I'm not sure. You read into that a little deeper. What I was saying is they could possibly provide support so that, well, the classroom educator has already worked with the kids for a certain amount of time and then has now moved on to a different phase for those kids, that para could just support them at a cheaper dollar, not to read, not to teach, not to replace, to support. Then that, then the teacher could then connect with the students online. That's, that was what I was referring to. So I just wanted that clarified.
Thank you, Mrs. Sports. Just two points. Going back to the equity factor with the para versus the teacher, and I hate to say this out loud, but the equity would balance out the following week. While the teacher is remote with group A, maybe we're feeling it's inequitable for one of the groups, but the following week, that would flip. So that would be taken into consideration. And also to Mrs. Griffin's point, there have been studies going on between young children and adults, and I'm not talking about the high school here, that young children are better at following and respecting masks and social distancing than adults are. So I think that our young children, if we're setting that precedent right from day one and the expectation is set by the teachers and the regular personnel, I think aside from the bathroom situation and making sure that sanitizing's going on, I think that you're right with the monitor situation. So just my two cents on that. Thank you.
So again, if I could just be clear too, the equity piece and Mr. P., I have to pick on you, but I'm in a similar building issue, that it's, that it's commonplace that our teachers will spend a block with a group of students while the paraprofessionals spending that same block with another group of students. To me, it's, it's no different if the teacher's spending a block remotely with a group of students while the paraprofessionals working in the classroom with a group of students. And we're only talking about a short block in the morning.
Yeah, I didn't mean to suggest that. What I was saying was simply that the role of a para and the role of a teacher is very different. And what you determine they do is really the point. And if you're expecting that when half of those students, whether they're remote or whatever, are with a para and you're expecting them to deliver any kind of instruction, and again, that looks very different at every grade level. Because at kindergarten, it's different than at grade three and they're more independent, then I think you have an equity issue, so. But let me just go back and make sure that you do look at this job description because it was, this was driven by your principals in the, the ability to ensure the health and safety of students. So it wasn't driven by central office. We had the discussions about how do we make sure that we do this? How do we make sure that we supervise students in the hallway to keep the three-foot distance? How do we make sure that we have someone to cover at meal times and when teachers have duty-free lunches? How do we make sure that we have some assistance, for example, when they take off their, their mask and place them on a napkin before they eat? What about arrival and dismissal when you need someone to ensure that they come in, you know, certainly and sanitize? So it was, while we could certainly look at the number, when we spoke with the principals and their number brought us close to 20. And using just a minimum, you know, hourly wage, it brought you close to probably $150,000, so. But certainly we can look at that differently and we'll just have to assume that some of this can happen on students' parts, but we won't have that availability as much as we probably would like. I don't know. Yeah.
Ms. Keating.
Clara Barton, looks a little bit different. So again, what is similar is at the beginning of the day, there's a block of time where it's directed to those students who are in remote. And our teachers would be teaching a class, whether it's a phonics class or it's a literacy piece that's important for them. We also built in some time, potentially additional time at two of our grades where we could do morning meeting. But that's not to say that, again, we could have our... we could have our remote students just stay on as part of a class that continues to happen. Thank you. Again, the rest of the day is similar to what we typically would see in a school day where you have blocks of instruction around literacy and math, science, social studies, work into that, and then, excuse me, a block for specials. We also would have the same dismissal time at the end of the day. This is a sample schedule of the middle school. We moved from a six-period day to a five-period day, longer periods of time. And what we built in to each period was a fifteen-minute block of time at the end of the period where typically at middle school level, students could be working on some homework for the next day, starting their homework, if you will, or engaged in some other types of lessons or activities. And we would ask the teacher then to spend a part of that period connecting with the remote students. Could also be that, quite frankly, the teacher has used most of that period and at the end, it's time that they join in together and have some conversations. So it can be used differently. These periods are a little bit different than obviously their, their normal length. We took that period and by adding, taking the period out, period six, one period, I should say, the sixth-period day, it provided about three or four additional minutes or so length in the period. The actual teaching period is close to what they currently have this year. So again, this would have dismissal. One of the other changes, students go directly to period one, so they don't wait in the cafeteria, which is typically what happens.
Hi, Dr. Nash. I have a quick question on that. So when a student arrives at school, usually at the middle school is a parent drop-off area and they sit outside and they wait and they wait and wait. And then all of a sudden, there'll be a mass opening of the doors. Everyone just goes to their period lockers. What was?
No lockers. So no locks this year, partly because, you know, the recommendation is that lockers, you, it's difficult because they're so close, obviously, to keep students apart unless you assign them ten feet apart. So we're gonna ask that all students carry things in backpacks. And when they would come in, I think the pattern, if I remember, and Amy might be here to jump in, but the pattern was they'd come and they would sit in long hallways before they would go in. So now we're gonna ask them again, we're gonna have to make sure that when our buses come and arrive, even though they might arrive one, two, three at a time, a bus monitor has to make sure that this bus empties, gives them time to come in, then the other bus empties. You really don't want all the groups running out of the buses at once. And they would come in and go directly to their first-period class. So you hopefully wouldn't, and the other thing you had asked about, or thinking, talking, and I didn't answer it, would be that we'd probably want to have a different drop-off as far as entrance for parents with, who are driving. So those are all the logistics we gotta work out. Yeah.
So the child would carry their jacket with them all day long? That's kind of a, I think, a little bit of inconvenience and things, things could happen.
Right.
You need those jackets, huge backpacks and.
I know. And they tell me they typically, again, I'm a parent of a young one, so they typically shove them in their backpack. And in some instances, I can go back to, in my hometown, I used to see my middle schoolers who lived across the street and high schoolers in the middle of winter with no jacket. They'd have a T-shirt on or a sweatshirt and that was it. And they'd wear it all day. I was always amazed. I was freezing and they were in nothing, nothing warm. So it didn't, doesn't appear to be a major issue, but certainly we may have to have a place for them. But again, I give a question.
Yes. Can I, if only, Mrs. Sports?
Just like. Go ahead, Amy. Can I jump in?
Hold on, hold on. Amy, yes, go ahead. Yep.
Okay. So they're not going straight to their first-period class when they get off the bus. We, Michael and I have talked a lot about this strategically, having places for the cohorts to go in the morning, that they're distanced from each other, but they're not intermingling with other cohorts until it's, the bell rings and then they go to their first-period class where they take attendance. They're not moving as much at the middle school as they are at the high school. So they're, having a place to keep their things is not an issue and it won't be an issue. They're not moving seven periods a day. So, you know, we, we've looked at strategic ways to keep them from transitioning as much as possible. So I, I don't think it's going to be as big of a deal as everybody is thinking because if they're moving, at most, they're moving between two rooms only and that's it. They're not transitioning to five different periods. They're not going to specials. The specialists, except for Jim, are gonna come to them. So the, the transition is strictly limited. So I don't foresee that being an issue. But the, the lockers are very close together and there's no way for us to space them out enough in the hallways that they wouldn't be, I mean, we can look at that, but we're already short on lockers to begin with. We're also separating grade seven into two different hallways so that they're not intermingling with everybody at once for this year. So we've looked at some strategic ways to keep them as separate as possible and have some plans in place for that. Just for some clarification.
Thank you. How will those, um, how will those students be supervised? Because if they're not going right to their rooms when they go into the building, how will they be supervised?
Well, I do already have two hallway monitors in the budget in the morning for that purpose, plus myself. And part of what we've asked for for those additional monitors would be doing some of that in the morning as well to help me out. Michael is usually outside at buses in the morning and I'm usually inside, but we all know in the life of an administrator, sometimes you can't guarantee that you're gonna be in that hallway every single morning. So I do have two people already who are my morning monitors that would help with that, with ob, like observing room kids.
How many hallways do you use in the morning?
Well, typically we only use two and it'll be even smaller because we're condensing the kids in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Knack Gill, you got a question?
Yeah, just a couple, I had a couple of things, but while you're on there, Amy, you could specifically answer. So you're saying it's limited transition. So are teachers transitioning from classroom to club?
Well, what we did was we only have two-person teams in grades five and six.
I know that.
So they're right next to each other.
Correct.
In grade seven, we have four-person teams, but they're not, they're in, gonna be in the same hallway, but the teachers will move, the kids will not. So, and then they're not gonna move for specials except for physical education. They'll have to go to phys ed, but art will come to them, music will come to them, STEM will come to them. So the kids are, it's very limited on how many times they're moving. It's not like the high school where they're all kind of mixed together and it, it's a different thing, you know?
So middle school, so a sixth and seventh, a sixth, seventh grader will be sitting in the same class all day and the teacher's.
Of course, for, just for two of the periods. So we're trying to limit the transition to them only transitioning between two rooms rather than four. That's all. So, for example, if they're, they might be in the same room for science and math and then they might transition to a different room for English and social studies. Or they, we can have them transition four times if that's what you prefer, but we were told to try to limit transitions as much as possible.
No, please, I'm not implying that. Just asking questions, Amy. So the cleaning of rooms, is there a protocol for cleaning when the kids leave? Like, who's doing that? Custodians, are they gonna be able to handle all that?
Totally different committing than me.
All right, well, this one, I, this one.
I can answer that question for you, right?
All right, this one you can answer. Who is covering teachers for lunch when the kids are in their classrooms eating?
Well, that was the point of those monitors. We already have three, so we could do it with them straddling between two classrooms. There's only ten kids in a class. But that was one of the reasons we asked for additional monitors was to help with that.
And what's the reason we haven't discussed using the cafeteria?
Oh, we measured out the cafeteria. We would need all new cafeteria tables to make that work.
What about your student desks?
Again, we have to purchase student desks to make that work. I don't think we have enough to facilitate that.
Yeah, you, you only have half the kids in the building. You're not using every room. It, it would, you could space out the seats.
We can look into that, but we did have to outfit some, some classrooms with desks that we didn't before. So we can definitely look into that using the cafeteria.
Well, yeah.
I'm totally open to that. I'd rather do that than being in classrooms anyway.
Yeah, and that just gives you the teachers their break or their contractual lunch. All right, thank you for answering. Appreciate it.
So one of my concerns is if COVID is living in the air and someone has been exposed, all students are entering and exiting from the same doorway. So they're essentially all walking through the germs in the morning and all walking back through the germs. Is there any way, as I think about the different buildings, and I know that at the elementary level, there's a third-grade hallway and a second-grade hallway and a fourth-grade hallway and so on, and the middle school as well. Is it possible to have them enter and exit different doors according to grades and where their hallways are? Because then again, they're at least only being exposed to the fifth-grade germs or the sixth-grade germs. Is that feasible?
We have talked about having different exits and exits for different groups of kids. The difference with our dismissal, though, is that we dismiss by buses, not by classes, because they're all in different places. So at some point, they're gonna be in the same hallway. You know, the way, the way the buses are, we have to look at transportation because there's some, still some unanswered questions around dismissal. We have talked about the kids using different doors, but we also can't have kids dropped off like carbuncles. So we gotta figure out, there, there's still some logistics that we need to look at for that.
Okay.
Once we have the cohorts and the buses set.
All right, thank you.
We also have to remember our safety plan as well, too. Because those, those doors still have to be locked. If we're using multiple doors, means multiple staff members now to monitor those doors to make sure the parent or someone else isn't coming in with the children.
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, so that's another fact to throw back in there. Pal, go right ahead.
Just to piggyback off of that statement, if we're having outdoor classrooms, I know that's a hot issue right now. What's the safety for the kids if they're outside? Right? They're not in locked schools anymore. So food for thought, maybe a different issue at a different time. But for our walkers and our kids that arrive early, kind of like Mr. C was saying before, what's the plan for staging for those kids? I know so many parents now are probably gonna have to say, you know, you're on your own, you have to put your sister or brother on the bus or you have to do this and you're walking to school. Have we thought, like, I think for, we really need to think for transportation, more staging areas and realizing those kids automatically on the buses already live in the same kind of social group, social pod, kind of, you know?
So you've got, you've got category, you've got kind of three categories.
Right.
You've got the bus students, you've got those whose parents are gonna drive them, and then you've got that third category, which is the collection, depending on where you are, of bikers or drivers.
Yeah.
And walkers. Kind of, that's the sort of category. So you've really gotta look at those three and determine, you know, what entrance makes sense for them as they come and direct people to that. The same way with arrivals and dismissals of parents who are bringing their students in the morning, we may have to rethink that. So those are all the logistics that we have to work through. And that will be all communicated, you know, once we get through the, this first stage, which is to determine what plan we're gonna have. Because if you're gonna go to remote, then it's a whole different ballgame. Then we're talking about a whole different thing. So we, we've been talking about it. We recognize and it's gonna look different. It's gonna have to be a lot of communication. One of the reasons for the orientation, the phased-in opening is to really have some time with parents to explain all of these changes, physically sometimes show them that, to show students that. So that was one of the, the reasons why we wanted to do that also.
Yeah. And do we have trapezoid tables in the district that like, you know, like certain districts have furniture that they can't use anymore?
I have not seen trapezoid, but.
Because I was gonna say, like, all the trapezoid tables in my district are being repurposed, you know? So like the student desks, like Mr. C was saying, that aren't being used, staging the cafeteria, laying it out now, taping down things, seeing the space, you might be surprised.
It depends how many lunches you can run, you know, how big your cafeteria is, how many lunches you can run with the distance that you need and what would the impact be on student learning time? Because you take time, you have to run more lunches.
Right.
That's for sure. You know, so it just depends on that. And then do you have the, you know, the resources as far as tables and that, that you, you need to, that you would use? So, but.
But a lot of people have kind of thought about assigned seating for kids at lunch. They sit in the same area with their same class, right? Their same kind of pod. And so I think feasibly it could be done.
It's more really the size of your caf and how many students eat lunch at a certain time because you're not gonna wanna add another lunch because now you're cutting into the time on learning. That's already looking a little different in some instances. And then do you, do you have the resources to make it happen as far as, you know, the tables and whatever, whether you use Plexiglas or whatever. Obviously, a cafeteria is ideal. You just, then you have to worry about passage and passage of students and hallways and that, you know, before. So that was one of the things. Remember, DESI recommended eating lunch, e, eating classrooms. They did not recommend cafeteria until they got pushback on it. And one of the reasons is because as soon as you put cohorts of groups of students out, there is no way you're gonna guarantee they're gonna stay separate or with their group. I will tell you that. It just will not happen. We know how kids are. Oh, there's my friend. I don't care. Even if you take two minutes longer, they'll stay in the hallway, be two minutes late to lunch and be with another friend. So that's, that's the challenge, you know? It's kind of a juggling act, isn't it, between the two?
But Dr. Nash, I would say they probably would if they had their own classroom teacher monitoring that lunch and taking those kids to that lunch as opposed to a monitor that doesn't know that they shouldn't be with this kid or that kid.
But currently, we don't do that.
I know. That's why I think we might need to rethink that.
No, they would still do it.
You think?
And at the end of the day, we wanna create another layer of discipline issues on something that we can solve by using the classrooms. On this, eventually, yes.
It creates another whole set of issues.
There's a whole set of issues on the mask. Is that anytime you have student movement in groups congregating, you're gonna have a mask issue. And I don't want, and the last thing you know is send, is take a kid out of a learning environment and deal with discipline.
Would I rather see students in cafeterias eating? Absolutely. I mean, when I look at our elementary schools, they're carpeted classrooms. So that's my, you know, so just picture that, except for K, which will now be tiled before we open. So, so it is a challenge. There's no question about it.
Challenge in the experience is one hundred percent different than what kids are used to.
Absolutely, abso-.
One hundred percent.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions in the middle school plan here? All right, let's progress.
High school. So we talked about the fact, this is what a modified block looks like. I keep wanting to say four by four, but it's not because it's only seven periods. So, but it's periods one, two, three on day orange. And four is the constant period at sixty minutes. This, this looks similar, mirrors the middle school in that with a ninety-minute period, you can call out time easily to do, to connect daily with your class. And again, knowing that you've got different kids in every group, in every period, important to make that connection. So this would work very similarly. We extended passing times for between periods and again, minimizes movement of students. So now that they're, instead of six changes during the day, there are only three. So it will be a very different experience for our faculty. They're used to teaching fifty-plus minutes and now we're really almost doubling that.
And what time is this dismissal?
Still the same, one forty-five.
One forty-five.
Yeah. Nothing changes with the start and, and stop time of the high school. It's just really a modified, what we call a modified block schedule. Students tend to like it. If you've seen it used in districts, I mean, it's been around for years, whether it's a modified block or a full block. It's been around for a long time because they only have, instead of having seven classes in a day or eight in some instances when you do a, a real full-block schedule, they only have four at the most. So every other day. So there's that ability to kind of, you know, a little extra day in between to do work. So also, on the other hand, teachers tend to assign sometimes a little bit more, more.
You can't lecture during that time, yes. Definitely changes your category.
So the second option for parents is remote learning or what we call Oxford Public Schools Remote Learning Academy. Students are at home for their school day, Monday through Friday. The student day can be set by the parents. In other words, as long as it equals, it's equivalent to the length of the regular school day in the school in which they would attend, the parents could set a different timeframe. If they wanted to do a day that started a little bit later, it really is up to the parents to make sure, but to make sure that their students spend an equivalent amount of time as if that child were in school. Daily attendance is taken, grades are issued. One of the biggest, two of the biggest changes, I think, in remote learning between the spring and now is that while most schools did not give grades, all students will be graded for any aspect of remote learning, whether it's part of hybrid or whether it's remote learning, full remote learning. And also, daily attendance will be taken. This is primarily, this is self-paced, self-directed, independent learning. We are recommending that some positions need to be added for this to work with the option that we're looking at, which is option five of the remote learning plan from DESI. We would need to hire potentially four. Again, it depends on the number of families and students who elect to participate in remote learning, but we would anticipate hiring. but we would anticipate, uh, hiring, uh, probably one for every building, uh, remote learning supervisor, but that could change. The role of the supervisor is really, uh, to monitor and to coach and to check in with students, to facilitate the student progress. Uh, students would be primarily in, in a learning management system, following some directed, uh, coursework, and to provide some assistance and training that needs to happen to students. Uh, obviously, two, uh, families will need some technical support, particularly when they first, uh, engage in it and set it up. Next slide.
Uh, just go back, go back in one second, please. And you said that we'd have to hire.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be an internal posting, where maybe a shift in a position?
Could be.
From, from a current faculty member?
Could be.
That maybe, oh, had a health concern that could not come into the actual building?
If they qualify, uh, in their health concern, but, um, they may not qualify. So we have to be very cautious about that, and plus, we need to remember that, right now, uh, if it's, if the qualification is under COVID, that, uh, that goes away December thirty-first. So, unless the government decides to, uh, continue that. So, yes, but the answer is yes, we could do that, yes, we could look at that, certainly.
Instead of creating, it's creating a new position, but it might be using
Right.
existing staff within the budget, within our budget.
Well, we'd also have to look at that staff member, because we'd have to replace that staff member potentially, if they were someone who was, um, at home, you know, because of a COVID-related illness, um, and, um, met the guidelines, then we still may, we still would have to fill their position, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in regards to the Remote Learning Academy, does every, like, district across the Commonwealth, their kids enroll in some academy now, if they choose that option?
It depends which of the four options, uh, excuse me, five options a district chooses to look at. We looked at, um, two options, four and five. Um, the difference between them is, uh, one option comes with teachers, a lot more costly. The other option, you basically have to have your own. But both of them use learning platforms. The option that, um, is more expensive has more synchronous, um, learning, um, from the point of potentially being daily, uh, to, two times a week. I think the two, uh, companies, uh, that DESI has looked at and has recommended are TECA and, uh, Commonwealth, Mass Commonwealth. Got me, I always get the name confused. Uh, CMVS, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual Schools. Uh, they've been around for a while, uh, one is more expensive because it is, uh, it features three tiers, uh, one tier is, uh, daily. Uh, they range, they're usually priced either by, by course, by, or they're bundled. For example, the, the K-five package sometimes is bundled, uh, so the student gets a collection of, uh, courses, and, and they follow a very kind of prescriptive, progress-m monitored type of, uh, curriculum. They say that they're aligned to the state's standards, but again, you know, uh, if, if you go a route of buying an, an, an L, a learning platform, and you don't go with TECA or, uh, the Commonwealth one, the Massachusetts Commonwealth, uh, where you get direct teachers, you're really pacing it on your own. The, the, um, one program runs for the semester somewhere around three thousand dollars per student, twenty, twenty-eight seventy-five, something like that. That's the one where you're going to get more daily, day-to-day, um, teaching. The other one, uh, they range somewhere around twelve hundred a semester. Uh, one of the things is that you need to stay in for that semester. You know, you can't just all of a sudden jump, because, you know, it would be difficult. But let me go on and explain, is this the slide, okay? So typically, uh, in the model that we were thinking about, looking at, it was really more geared to Model Five, to Option Five, excuse me. Uh, students typically, uh, access in this model, uh, a full suite of courses, includes a learning management system. The instructional content is there, uh, in many instances, the secondary level is course-driven. Uh, a administrator or counselor or the supervisor would make sure that the courses align as closely as possible to the courses they're taking at the secondary level. Uh, and we may even require you to take, you know, certain courses. It covers the basic cu- curriculum standards, um, primarily asynchronous. Uh, when you look at this option, uh, you will have the benefit of having, uh, a, a site supervisor, if you will, but it's not the same as the models where you have daily teaching going on, the more expensive ones, and the ones that are described in Option Four, the, in DESI. Uh, at the elementary level, the platform typically provides curriculum that allows the students to, to do a lot of what we call practice. And then they go back and they personalize it when they, um, in their progress monitoring, when they start to, you know, make mistakes and that, they can go back and reset it. It doesn't mean that a teacher can't be involved in overseeing this. And this is, you know, so this LMS model can be used as a piece of, uh, remote learning of your hybrid. Does that make sense? Yes, it does, cause you all understand it. But I don't, you know, so it doesn't mean that you can't pull that in and have that as a piece on those days that students may not be in front of you. So it kind of, you know, promotes some, um, opportunities, let's say, I think. Uh, at the secondary level, the platform really, uh, empowers more ownership, because it's really course-directed. A student goes in, uh, again, uh, usually, uh, an administrator will oversee it and will determine which courses are more appropriate for the student based on where they are, their grade level, you know, and what they would be taking if they were in school. It does not depend on live teaching, but there certainly are opportunities, um, particularly if you have a supervisor who might be able to connect to the classroom teacher and say, you know, in the world history, a course that you're taking online, so-and-so's got something coming up, you ought to jump in, into it. So, that's where some connections, I think, can be made. And it's, again, something that we really have to, uh, talk about in our discussions with the union, so. So I wanted to let parents know, like, who do, I think the big question for me would be, you know, well, how do I know? Given, given the fact that certainly parents are uncomfortable, and they simply fear for the safety of their child, and they don't wanna send their child back. So there's really not a lot more discussion to have on that, if you, if you are one of those. Or if your child is medically compromised, or you're living in a family with someone who's high-risk, you certainly, uh, may make a decision that this is the best for you, um, at this point in time. But who else, what else is the profile of a student who typically, uh, might do well, or might wanna opt for this? Certainly, uh, the non-traditional learner. There were lots of kids who really loved, uh, the remote learning back last spring. There were kids who did very well in it. A lot of them were at the secondary level, um, they weren't necessarily elementary.
A lot of those may also add, also balance jobs.
Yes, absolutely.
Typically ones that work in grocery stores.
It's worked in their favor.
That, that they're working their forty, fifty hours, and they still maintain school, and everything worked into their own schedule, yeah.
Uh, obviously, a, a student who's independent, self-motivated, um, would be a, a good candidate. Students who don't get bored easily with online curriculum, uh, you know, there's usually about fifteen minutes or so when you finally start to get, uh, bored with something today. Uh, students who can follow, uh, directions and stay on task, um, tend to do well in this. Uh, students who desire to set their own pace, I'm just not a good early morning learner. I learn better maybe later in the afternoon, so you can set your pace on this, as long as you do the equivalent time. Uh, certainly is more, is better suited for families who tend, or really feel right now that they may wanna keep their child out for a longer length of time. Uh, obviously medically compromised students, uh, students with family members who are at high risk for COVID, and students, uh, whose families are just very uncomfortable right now about sending, uh, their children to school. So that's kind of a, a broad brush of the type of student who may find this to be an environment, uh, that works for them. So, if you would go to the next one, we'll talk a little bit more about remote learning. So, okay, thank you. Uh, I think you're one ahead, aren't you? Okay. Alright, okay, sorry, I'm one behind, sorry. Uh, what else should you know, uh, in making a decision or in thinking about it? First of all, uh, we need to recognize that, uh, you're not gonna have your classroom teacher. So if you are thinking about the fact that your child may come back, um, that may make a difference to you. But, uh, while you may have con- you certainly will have contact with someone, um, it certainly is not gonna be your, and probably, in all likelihood, will not be, your classroom teacher. Remote Learning Academy content is primarily better suited for a certain, uh, type of learner, as I talked about in those slides before. Uh, families may decide to move a child into hybrid learning, uh, but we wanna make sure that we understand that, um, there's gonna be, generally speaking, some lag time before that happens. It would really be dependent on, I think, the grade level of your child, the time period in which you're doing it, uh, before we could tell you that it could happen overnight. So you, some people, uh, may say, I wanna give this a shot for a couple of weeks, and then I'm gonna just change. Well, that may not be the case, and it could be that by the time, uh, we see what's going on, uh, that it needs to be a little bit longer. However, it could be that the earlier you do it, the be- and you ma- make the decision to come back, the easier it's gonna be. But the longer you're in it, the harder it's gonna be.
Mr. Green.
Yes, good.
Hi, ma'am. Um, does this have any financial implications for the district? For example, I know October first is our big cutoff date. So if this Remote Learning Academy is kinda like a, a separate thing with the state, and our kids enroll in this, are they gonna be counted, counted in our enrollment numbers? And if not, and they choose to come back into the district after October first, will we not get Chapter Seventy funding for those students and effectively not have money for them?
They are your students.
Next year. So they still maintain?
You grade them?
Okay.
Yep, the teacher gives the grade. You know, the, the learning supervisor may certainly say, here's the progress, here's what we, but the teacher grades them, issues that. They are our students, is, while, uh, I think in the SIMS data, I think we're gonna be required to keep two separate, as to who is remote and who is not, that's my understanding.
This won't affect our Chapter Seventy? Cause I think I read today, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the MAS C web, like, listserv, that this potentially could affect our enrollment for Chapter Seventy funding, if people choice out at a certain time and try to come back.
Well, here's, here's the difference, I think they might be referring to Option Four.
Okay.
Which is, when someone, um, is, you know, both of those environments, TECA and, uh, CMVS, have existed for a period of time, and, um, they are virtual schools, virtual school districts, if you will. And so, a child, if a, a district certainly selected that option, and a child was in that option, after a period of time, they may determine to stay in that option. And down the road, that certainly could be a cost to a district. So maybe that's what they were referring to, particularly that option. But, uh, we count them as our students until they officially un-enroll.
Okay.
Right?
I just don't wanna set us
Right.
up for
Well, it's a parent's choice.
I get that.
If you, so ultimately, uh, it, dependent on the model you offer, certainly, but it is a parent's choice, if the committee chooses, you know, to, uh, have that option, it would be their choice. Students who have disabilities, uh, certainly, uh, and who elect remote learning, I want parents to know that their services will continue. Just because you elect remote learning and you're not here for any part of in-person learning, it does not mean that your services won't continue, um, just as they did, uh, when we were in full remote. Uh, parents, however, and families are responsible to ensure that their children are in attendance and online for a regular school day that parallels the length of the day of the school that they would be attending. And then, uh, we're going to put out a student choice form. Uh, we part of, uh, probably go out with the survey or closely after it, uh, next week, uh, so that parents who, uh, are interested and believe that they have made the decision, uh, can complete that form, send that back to the building principal, so we can start to look at what our numbers may look like, um, as we, uh, plan for our reopening.
Can I ask a question? Number three, I mean, I mean, I have lots of concerns with this Remote Learning Academy, one that Pal brought up. So I definitely would like some clarification that we wouldn't fall liable, just that I'm not being counted as our kids. I agree with you, though, what you said, Dr. Nash, the, the other two programs would be. If, if we do this academy, or it's an option, why would it take three to four weeks for a kid to come back? If they've decided to get out?
Well, it could, it depends, let me just give an example, and I think it's more probably at the secondary level. If someone was in a course and it was course-directed, you may want them to complete that course before they come back in, you know, as opposed to an elementary where they're not in a specific course. Let's say they're in a chemistry course, and there just isn't a section that's open, or it's not running, or something else. So it might be that it would be better for them to finish it, um, and complete that semester, or complete the course whenever it's over.
But it, but it could be soon.
It could be, yes, yes, it's up to, I'm just
Up to the parent, essentially, right? If they say, I want my child back in, we can't say no.
Well, we can't say no, but we can say there's a period of transition, and DESI has indicated that can be up to four weeks, in their guidance. Yeah, yeah.
That's, I gotta tread, tread carefully on that.
Yeah.
In terms of contact tracing as well, so if two weeks, three weeks into it, parents decide this is a nightmare, I can't do this, and all of a sudden, the floodgates kind of open up into, now we're talking about trying to fit where it was a ten-to-twelve student class. Now it's perhaps more, um, now there's more kids, more exposure. So just keeping an eye on, you know, a lot of people coming into the school at the same time. So I think that does give some leeway for staggering, staggering as well.
So I know a lot of other districts right now have set specific entering and exiting dates for different programs. So if somebody does choose to, you know, do a remote learning academy, the parents have full knowledge that you will only be allowed back at this specific time. I think, um, Ashland has thrown out some specific dates and things like that. So that's one thing that maybe the committee wants to kind of research.
Well, uh, you set the calendar.
Right.
And you certainly can suggest that they would stay out for the term. Uh, but we really don't know, uh, if the term is gonna be, uh, one way or the other. So, while we would strongly urge them to consider this for at least the first term, you know, I don't know if you, the committee wants to set, uh, 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 say you can't come back after five weeks. I mean, that's really your choice.
Well, not like they can't come back, I'm not saying people can't come back, but if we have it planned, you know, our staff will be available to reschedule, things like that.
Like a commitment.
Like, there's a commitment, and if parents give us a notice, you know, we're not saying you tell us on this date. We're saying, you give us a heads-up multiple weeks in advance, that this is something you're thinking about, so we have staff prepared, and we're prepared, and we can already think, have some discussions, maybe like, in anticipation.
I think that's why DESI said three to four weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it gives you some time, and you can, you know, whenever that comes, it could come two weeks in, and then it's, could come at the end or the middle.
But I just think for our administrators and our teachers and different people, if they knew, I'm not dealing with this until this, you know, this specific window here, I'm gonna have to field these emails, as opposed to at the whim of a parent at any time. Cause that, that could be very disruptive and, and difficult for a school to deal with. So if you, if we control it maybe just a little bit, um, you know, not saying that we're denying anybody access to the school, cause we're certainly not, but like, sometimes you gotta control things, so we can plan better.
Would you have a suggestion as to a timeframe?
I guess I'd have to research and propose that, and maybe, you know, we discuss it at a future meeting, or that might be one of those things that goes into the draft that we discuss coming up again.
Pal, is there anything wrong with up number three? We, we had the three to four week that may take up to, there's some, something like, day one is not gonna work. And maybe, for student A, it may be a really seamless transition right back.
Right.
Student D's schedule is, it's out there, you know, she mentioned, Dr. mentioned chemistry, mentioned everything going on at the timeline, like, the ministry's guidance is, this is a really hard one to fit in right now, or the proximity of how many students coming back in.
Right.
I mean, I see what, how it's written in our notification, three to four weeks. May take up to, it could be a day or two, it could be that, depending on what, what case-by-case scenario.
Yeah, and I understand that there would be like some wiggle room, like, I get that. I mean, I specifically think if we had students that have, you know, IPs or, or other specific needs, we would have to really kind of think about how we fit them in and make a schedule for them.
But if someone were, if a student, let's say, was in remote learning for three weeks, and then wanted to come back, would you want them to wait to a certain date, that, let's say, that, let's just say the date was the end of the term, you wouldn't? You'd say, well, gee, we need some time, that's the only thing about setting a drop-dead date, because it depends on when they wanna come back, how soon they make that decision. If they make the decision, and there are only two weeks left in the term, then it's no big deal, they're gonna say, okay, fine. But if they made the decision two weeks into that term, then you're gonna say to them, well, sorry, our guidelines say you can't come back now until the end of the term, and that's another six weeks. So that was kind of the, you know, the thought process of having just a number of weeks, because I think it's dependent on when they tell you that. You certainly hope that You certainly hope that in two weeks, everybody doesn't change their mind, excuse me, and want to flood back into the classroom. But on the other hand, you kind of do.
Right.
It's our goal. We've got goals. We want to educate the child in the classroom.
Right. Do you schedule all kids? And then do the work upfront? And then if people make a different decision, it doesn't really impact it because we've already planned ahead? I mean...
I think that would be dependent on how many opt for this, once we see that our parents tell us. You know, it might be easy to do it that way. And assign, because you're going to assign them to a teacher anyway, in a sense. This is your teacher, you're just not here. So you may want to do that. But I think it's dependent on how many are really going to respond positively that they're going to keep their children, enroll them in remote learning academy.
Yeah, this just shows how many unknown variables are there. Every time you talk about something, you... Yeah.
That's right. That's what we've all been dealing with, all of you. Okay, next slide. I'd like Sue to talk a little bit about our special population and our plan for prioritizing them this fall.
If I can see it, that's why this... Okay, so as far as identifying and prioritizing students for in-person learning, Desi put out a document which identifies students based upon their IEPs and determining whether they have significant and complex needs. The way it was determined, just so everybody knows, is that there is a PL3 form that gets attached to every IEP. That's more an office form than it is a form that parents get. And we use it like behind the scenes to, which identifies the student's primary disability as well as what their need is. Are they in the high, medium, or low as far as area of need? And that, that is identified based upon the level of services and the numbers of services that the students have. So Desi identified that, determined that anybody that's in that high-needs category, we need to look at them to see if it makes sense for them to have more services and be the individuals that participate in learning in full. Which means if we're, in the case of hybrid model, we bring those students back more than we would regular ed students. So those students that were identified, they said that they needed to meet at least two of the following criteria as well as being in the high-needs category. The first one was that they needed to be provided services that was outside the general education class, which meant that inclusion students right away would not be considered high-needs, which they generally aren't anyways. They needed to have service providers that were special ed teachers and related service providers. As well as the third one is that they needed to spend at least or more than 75% of their day in special education services. So when you look at that from a perspective in the district, the, the population that sticks out the most right away is those students in sub-separate classes. Because those are the ones that are high-needs, that are in there anywhere from 75% to 100% of the day. So when we were, did you, okay, went on to the next slide. Got it. So when we were prioritizing the students that needed more full learning, which means being here every week, Monday through Thursday, as opposed to every other week, we identified the students that were in the substantially separate programs within our district, and there's six of them, six programs, substantial separate programs. We identified the integrated preschool students, because that was another area that Desi felt, and I agree with them, that those students need more early intervention. That's the reason we're bringing them in, is because they're students with special needs. And we want to hit the ground running with them and provide them more support at the younger age as, so that then they can transition off of an IEP and receive, go into regular education. Also, another area that was identified was English language learners as well as the homeless and foster care students. Those are the at-risk groups that we determined were in court for full in-person learning. Okay. So, in servicing special ed populations, just in general, just so for purposes of this presentation, that students, no matter whether they're in full, in every week, in every other week, going remote, whatever our learning model is, that we are going to ensure that the students receive all of the services that are documented in their IEP. And we have the ability to do that. We've done that this summer. And we were on that road, actually, before, when we were remote in the spring. We need to ensure that there is strong communication between the parents and ourselves, because that's essential. One of the things that we really realized really early on when we were providing special ed services to students remotely was that parents needed a schedule. They needed a, a schedule they could look at every week, a visual schedule that said that OT is at this time, PT is at this time, et cetera, and that this is what we can offer. And if you can't be on, for whatever reason, then we have an option for you. And we provided that option, so that no student missed their services. Additionally, we may determine later on that there are other clusters of at-risk students, particularly within special education, that may be identified for in-person instruction. But at this point in time, we're focusing in on those, prioritizing those students that we identified in the last slide. As well as all these students, just so everyone knows, would be in Mondays through Thursday. And Friday, they would, it would be remote for all students. And there's many reasons for that, obviously. Monday through Thursday is our preschool program runs Monday through Thursday. So we'll provide some remote services for them on Friday. And it just, in, in the scheme of things that they're in Monday through Thursday, they also need to know what remote looks like, just in case we end up closing like we did before and going remote, so that they have an understanding as to what it looks like for them moving forward. The other, the last bullet point that I added, we added in was that special ed transportation will be provided for all those eligible students. Special ed transportation is determined as per their IEP. It is an area that we discuss at every IEP meeting to determine whether a child needs that level of support on a transportation vehicle. However, all students on special ed transportation vehicles are going to be required to wear masks, no matter what age they are. And that's a definite point that I will be constantly making clear.
Just a quick question, Dr. Henry Shaw, on your last point there. What about students who have medical issues, breathing issues, anxiety issues? I know anxiety wouldn't be on the bus, I apologize. But, you know, like, everyone is required to wear a mask unless. So we're going to require it on the bus. What if they fall in the unless category?
If they fall in one of the categories, then they need to get some kind of documentation before we're going to say it's fine.
Okay.
However, if I were a parent and my child had anxiety issues around wearing a mask or had a medical problem, at this point in time, I'd be transporting them, to be honest with you.
Right, maybe not feasible for all families, though.
Right, exactly. No, I understand that, but yeah. There's always exceptions.
Of course.
But the, the big thing is that we do transport kids that are preschoolers, students that are first, kindergarten, first grade. But the way the regulations or guidances are written at this point in time, it's grade 2 through 12. And actually, it's also the band company that's promoting, pushing that as well.
Okay.
It's 2 through 12 classrooms.
Right, yeah.
K through 12 on the bus.
Right, okay. Thank you, Phil.
So what is the plan for students who, I'm sure we have a percentage of students who are medically fragile in, in these high-needs programs? What is the plan for them when they can't physically come to the building? Is it just going to be the, the teletherapies and the tele that we're doing in the spring?
It may be. Or we have, it's going to be done on a case-by-case basis. For some students, we have, in the past, our therapists have gone into the homes of students who are medically fragile. But we need to be cautious about that right now. So, yes, teletherapy is an option. Providing supports to family and, and things to families, activities for families to do with the student. Having them join a live Google meets meeting, et cetera, so that they still stay connected to their peers. It's a variety of services, support services that we will use in order to meet the needs of these students. Anything else?
Thank you.
I have one thing that's coming to mind. So, this is for our high-need students predominantly. Okay, so, most of our students that would be like in an inclusion setting would still be in an inclusion classroom setting?
Correct.
Okay.
If they have an aid, in an inclusion setting, generally, students have, will have shared aids. If they have a shared aid, they will have that shared aid, which is why we want to make sure, when we do the cohorts, that those two students that may be attached to that aid are going for the same week. All right? As far as OT, PT, speech, BCBA, all the other services, yes, we will provide them, whether they're being, whether they're in an inclusion setting or whether they're in a sub-separate setting. And that's something that, that the special education teachers and I are working with the principals about when we determine our cohort groups, to make sure that we meet the needs of all those students and make it manageable for our special education teachers as far as scheduling goes. And also ensuring that we don't have all the special ed students in cohort A and wow, there's no special ed students in cohort B.
Yeah, and those are thoughts that are coming through my head. So I, I love to hear that you're anticipating that. And I'm not surprised, because I know you think way ahead. So, but I just like to hear it, you know? And I think parents would appreciate hearing it, too, that the thought is going in there to make sure that those classrooms are going to have, you know, peers that will be like peers for them. And also, you know, they'll be that least restrictive environment and they'll just be in kind of a cohort that meets their needs. And our students are kind of spread out, so they're not, you know...
Yes, and we need to be sure that we provide all services. Like, I was surprised, well, not surprised. I was very pleased with the way that we ran everything when we went remote.
Yeah.
As far as that there are any of the services that my special ed teachers and service providers provide. And they did a fabulous job, as I knew they would.
Right.
They documented all services. And actually, I really have not heard from one parent complain as to what they received when they were home. The other thing that we need to think about, and I did put in that document, is that students on 504 plans, we need to ensure that they receive the accommodations that they need as well as the services that they need. So that we don't miss any populations. I think I was pretty thorough about what we need to accomplish in order to make this work from a special ed and student service point of view.
Yeah, and I loved reading through, too, that meetings will still be remote for parents. I think that's probably one of the only things that was probably a huge positive out of this was having those meetings being like Zoom meetings or, you know, whatnot. Parents could join from anywhere. And it made it so parents could probably be more present and attend all those meetings. So that, I think, is a huge positive.
Yeah, and that's something that definitely will continue. And you're right, parent participation was up at IEP meetings.
Right.
Which was really fabulous. You know, some, and a lot of, some cases, we were getting both parents, which was something that didn't always happen.
That was a blessing. Well, thank you for all your hard work.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
The next slide talks about some of the feasibility constraints. We've really touched on a lot of these in talking about how to maintain a six-foot distance. Certainly, one area that I haven't touched on was the transportation. When we talk about our, our bus capacity, we usually run 71-seat buses, although I think Justin indicated we have an 84-seat. But with the guidelines that are out, that means that our capacity is about 23. Passengers are around 32%. So we know that there are, there are all kinds of constraints on the reopening of school in any way, shape, or form, from, you know, feeding students in cafeterias or classrooms to making sure you try to maintain a six-foot distance within your classrooms and looking at, you know, different types of things. Certainly, school districts, I'm sure in the past, recognize things like double sessions when schools were allowed to do that from years ago. That's not really an option, even though the time on learning hours have changed because of the 180, 270 days for students. Certainly, that, that old double sessions don't work well and couldn't work, really. Next slide. So I want to talk about some of the major costs, because I think that's important for everyone to look at. So as you are aware, we are making some recommendations around additional staffing. Certainly, these are some of the recommendations, but could include others. Looking at a monitor for each one of our buses. Those monitors would be hired through our bus company, primarily so that we do not have the benefit piece of it, or the town does not have that. But unfortunately, it also comes at a little bit of probably higher cost than we would want. I think Justin indicated to me that, and I indicated to you before, that it's around $26,000 per person. So you're looking at $260,000 to $280-plus thousand dollars just for the monitors for buses. So when we start talking about additional staffing, bear in mind that, that we're looking at probably about $720,000 between our two grants. So I was optimistic when I saw Senator McKenna's missive about the potential of the school districts and the town receiving some additional $700,000, while you know that that doesn't have to be earmarked for the school district. Certainly is something that I don't think any of us thought would happen. But again, it hasn't happened either, yet. So I'm cautious when I say that, I'm not sure. Custodians, you recognize, we recognize, that we were understaffed before COVID. So it's a no-brainer. And I'm not even sure that four part-time custodians are going to be able to do what we would like them to do, particularly with all of the guidelines and the safety protocols and the cleaning protocols that need to happen. But it is certainly a start. We have reworked shifts to try to have some overlapping, too, during the day. So we've met with the custodians and the steward to see how that works, and they seem to be amenable to that, so we will be adding that. The health and safety monitors, which you're going to get, you've got a job description for and certainly have indicated some of your thoughts on that. Again, those were to do a lot of supervision of ensuring that we maintain the safety protocols, that we, that we do sanitize when we get off a bus, when we come in from recess, when we go out to recess, before and after lunch. So all of that is part of this job when you don't have other people to do that and your teachers are teaching. Remote learning supervised, as I've talked about, obviously, our technology needs. The, the learning platforms are going to be expensive. We haven't got the figures yet. They just came out, actually, today with some information from Desi if we choose to go the route of the companies that they recommend. There'd be PD time, certainly, in training that would need to happen with that. Some of that would, I'm sure, be part of it, and some of it would be additional. The remote learning platform specifically is what I'm talking about, substitutes. We know that there's always a likelihood that our substitute line items, which we had monies left over last year because schools closed down, those could be, we could be way underestimating the need for subs this year because of the fact, as Amy would point out, that all of a sudden now, someone is, is home under either a quarantine, waiting for a test result, who knows? And PPE equipment, Justin has indicated to me that to date, with about, how many weeks' supply have we purchased?
Based on the state guidance, we've purchased about six, six weeks' supply.
State guidance is for three months. We've purchased about six weeks, and I think we're at $30,000?
As of today, yeah, we're...
So that's for six...
Almost $40,000 worth of PPE.
Right, it's six weeks.
How much of that has been delivered?
Quite a bit of it, actually. We have 1,500... Gowns, thank you. It's been a long day. We have well over 10,000 masks. We just actually got a donation from Curaleaf today, 7,000 masks. We've purchased about 10,000, so excuse me, that brings it about 17,000. We don't know how quickly we're going to go through that. But in addition to that, we, we have child masks for, you know, the smaller kids. Clear masks for some of the special ed students or maybe the teachers. N95 masks are on backorder. We have about a substantial amount coming in. I want to say 150 boxes, I just, I don't know, I'll tell my own inner box. 1,500 pairs of gloves. Fifteen hundred pairs of gloves, we have good in the nitrile gloves, not the latex. And again, that's for staff. And when I talk about PPE, it's mostly for the subset, separate classrooms. We have twenty-five instructional aids that may use this and also for the nurses too. Geez, let me think, hand sanitizer, we have a hundred and fifty, the, the touch-free dispensers coming in. Those are on backorder, so let me just back up, those are the ninety, uh, N ninety-five masks are on backorder. The sanitizer dispensers, however, W Mason tells us they should be coming in any, any day now. Also, we ordered, Christ, another hundred and fifty of just the pump dispensers just to have as backup in case, you know, the other ones don't come in from a different provider. And also gallons that were refilled that we can dump into the dispensers. Versus just the individual pouches, see, actually, you can do both, it'll take either one. Because we also have to have these available in every entrance. And masks, so that's why we're getting quite a few masks. So again, we're starting to reach about forty thousand dollars worth of PPE. And the things we have on backorder right now is the sanitizer and, and ninety-five mask. Everything else has, has come in so far.
So, for the masks, how frequently will staff be given masks? And how frequently will students be handed a mask? And so out of the ten thousand, do you expect that to last like a week, two weeks? Because that's not a lot when you think staff might get a mask every day.
Correct, so we're encouraging people to bring their own. Like, right out of the gate, we're encouraging, but what I've experienced is people don't always bring their own every single day and, and they have to have one. The guidance we received from DESI is, I believe it was one mask per student per week. And I, I believe it was a mask every day for, for staff, don't quote me on that, but it is pretty close. It was two gowns per day, per staff member, that's why the, the gowns and the gloves, excuse me. The gowns and gloves, we got fifteen hundred, we don't know, we're, we're really shooting from the hip, we don't even have data to, to, we're going by on what the state guidance was. In addition to that, I failed to mention, we got fifty goggles. Now, I, we, fifty goggles for the, we have twenty-five pairs. They're reusable, it's not like something disposable, so they can use that, and if they don't use them, well, chemistry or wood shop can, can have them. Also, the face shield, we got fifty facial, that's another thing, that's, we get two per staff member, those are also reusable. They might end up with one and not need anymore after that. So I'm sorry, I know I'm all over the place, but that's kind of, we've been living with the past couple of weeks. So we're, we're actually doing fairly well, we, we put a lot of money in and I thank the town as they've allowed us to charge their FEMA grants, that they'll get reimbursement for it to, to supply all this PPE. So we haven't, out of our school, school district budgets or money or grants or anything, we haven't started touching that for PPE. And again, it's been in an effort to try to.
Save it.
Save it, because we don't know, we don't even know out of this list what, what's going to happen yet. So we're trying to keep PPE off the radar and we'll, excuse me.
What is not on this list is transportation, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't put that on the list, and that's, that's our big unknown. Because until we get to cohort groups, we really don't know what the transportation is going to look like. But as you know, if we had to add a bus, it's roughly between seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. We don't know, you know, what that's going to look like, so. We'll see.
Yes, Paul.
So when we're down to transportation, have we had discussions with the transportation companies?
Oh, yes, we've met with them, oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But they, oh, yeah, we, but unfortunately, until we get to make a decision on what, how, what school's going to look like, you can't give them something to start on because you don't know yet. So once we know that we're going to use a hybrid model, a week on, week off, we can sit with them. And once the principals are able to put the cohort groups together, then we have to give them those two groups and that's when they begin their work.
So have you discussed staggering the times, because I know like if, if kids are coming in the elementary school later, is that going to mess up our bus contract or anything?
Well, if you stagger times or add on to your day, of course, you're going to add on to driver time, it's going to cost you more money.
Right.
What we probably need to look at is the way you run your, your tiered model right now. And it may have to be that we have to look at that, which is that you have, you know, the, you have one tier just for your two elementaries and then you have two tiers, one for high school and one for middle, which quite frankly, probably doesn't make a lot of sense given where they are, and you have the distance that someone in Barton stays on a bus to pick up the students in Chaffey. And your most prolific riders are your young students. So it may be that that whole thing gets looked at simply because of the cost factor or the way we, we need to look at it based on the cohort groups, I don't know. But as soon as we get that, we anticipate, I think, somewhere mid-August, that we'll have, the principals will have the cohort groups done. You know, in a week or so now, we'll be thinking, yes, right. Any questions on cost?
Can I ask, Justin, real quick, what do we have for money to potentially offset this, as you said it earlier?
Out of the two grants we have, was it just over seven hundred thousand?
Seven, I think about seven twenty, Dave, I think one's like three fifty, one's three seventy.
And additionally, if I may add, there's a lot of moving parts to this. For example, once this schedule is, is set to the best that we know, for example, if you don't have a school on Friday, well, you essentially lost every Friday for transportation costs, so that might result in some more available money to put towards maybe something else, so that's why we have to kind of start at the top and get, and get all those things resolved and hopefully, you know, there might be some savings in something like that.
You know, I know as somebody who does hiring, to hire potentially thirty to thirty-three people for a very similar job, then to hire four custodians, four remote supervisors, which could be internal, I get it.
A lot of hiring.
That's just a lot of people that I don't think, you know, people are knocking down doors looking for jobs right now even. That's quite a few positions to fill.
It absolutely is, no que, no question about it, you know, to put all those in. We started with our custodians already, so, and we were able, and that's a lot less.
Can you talk to me a little bit about technology, what is that?
The hardware, the software, the learning platforms, you know, all of that, primarily cases, now that we're going to give everybody hard cases for our really young kids, we're going to be carrying these on a daily basis. I think, I think that was most of it. The nice part is part of that grant money hopefully will cover some of that, so that may free up some of those monies and we won't have to use as much, but I don't know yet what the learning management systems are going to cost, you know, depending on how we use them. In addition to those in remote learning, if we use it as part of our hybrid, then, then you're going to look at a district license as opposed to, you know, individual students, I would assume, but, yeah. I think we talked about that, Justin, that was the slide we talked about. Okay, so we talked last month, yes, about phased-in reopening and I wanted to show people what that would look like. So the commissioner has recognized the need for additional days upfront for staff training. So we would propose that our school year for our staff would begin on eight thirty-one. That would run through nine fifteen. That gives our staff eleven days. Typically, our staff have two days before the start of the school year, so it's really adding one day on, ten days, called the gift of the commissioner, to do all of the work that we're going to need to do with training and preparation for our staff. And then we felt very strongly about starting the school year on the sixteenth for our students, but really doing, calling those three days really orientation days. And I would propose that on the sixteenth, we would bring in cohort A groups for the entire day and let them run through, let them see what it's like, let's go through all the ins and outs of what's changed for a student. And then on the seventeenth, bring in our B group, cohort three, B group. And then on the eighteenth Friday, I would propose in the calendar that that is a PD day for our staff. And that's the day when we would define that as parents coming in in groups to go over the, have those discussions about what needs to happen. Our staff getting ready to flip the switch on Monday for the two weeks, potentially only two, of remote, full remote learning for everyone. So phase three of this four phases, kind of in, in bringing in people, is to spend September from nine twenty-one, hopefully, until the first, I think that's a Friday, ten two, in a full remote mode for all students K twelve. And then, and only then, at that end of that period of time, dependent on our, our knowledge about what's going on in our community, also the state, we would potentially be able to move into a hybrid model starting that first full week in October. So that's the proposal, and I've given you in the next slide kind of the dates that would go with that. Now, I would also want to point out this, that dependent on a lot of things, we could remain in a phase longer. It's kind of like the governor. We could remain in phase three for a longer period of time if things aren't going well in the state, in the district, in the community, whatever. If we start to see things happening too and assessing what other schools are doing, who may happen to have around us more students attending or full in-person capacity, we may start to learn that this may not be the wise move to make at this point in time. Or we see a resurgence of the virus. So that's why the asterisk is there, and again, dependent on what happens, we could of course go back to a phase, move into phase four, if you will, hybrid, stay in that, hope that things are going well, or after a period of time, go back to phase three or go back to remote learning for all students. And that's why it's important, I think, that we start the year being, you know, dexterous in both, both models, so. And next slide.
Action question. Uh, yeah, but let's, but what I like to do at this point is we do have a separate agenda item on school calendar.
Yep.
So if we can talk about school calendar and maybe get to a vote or have some feedback, some discourse on this and go to, go to our next stage, so we'll still stay on calendar right now for the next few minutes, questions?
We'll go on the calendar?
I mean, if this is part of, yeah, this is all part of calendar, phase A and R.
Well, it's more specific to what's in the ca, what's in the. Still very concerned, Dr. Nash, I had asked this two weeks ago, I have asked you several times prior to this meeting and even at this meeting tonight, to talk to me about what a robust remote learning plan would look like. Haven't seen it in here, and now you're telling me, and us, I should say, you're telling the board, the community, that we're going to start in a remote learning for all students. But yet, the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen orientation is just about hybrid, which feasibly isn't going to start till the fifth, or at the earliest. So again, one of my big concerns that I brought up two weeks ago, and then we took a vote and I was confused and that's why I asked them multiple questions, I don't see a full, robust, remote learning plan at all. And that's a concern to me, I don't know what it's going to look like for those two weeks. I truly believe as a board member, we have one opportunity to change what remote learning looked like in the spring for, for families, for kids, for teachers, and I don't see anything that, that speaks to that in any of this.
If I might address that, certainly. So what we're presenting tonight, and I think I said it clearly, were samples and that what remote learning looks like as part of the hybrid model needs to be negotiated. I know that you sit on that committee and we started that, and I think that's where, I think, part of your discussion was extremely helpful. But I can't sit here tonight and tell you what that's going to look like and then the public expect that when I haven't negotiated that.
But respectfully, Dr. Nash, you've done that with the hybrid model. We specifically showed the public what the hybrid model looks like.
We, we have proposed a hybrid model with a schema, but we have not stated to them what is going to happen. I think you're asking me the question, which I understand, which is what's going to happen in, in remote learning? What's it really going to, whether it, right? And I'm saying to you that the expectations, what we want teachers to do, has to be negotiated. That's the piece of it. We did not, that's not a, a piece that we can get into detail right now. I can propose what it might look like in my eyes, but it's still part of that negotiation process that we have to go through, that all districts have to go through. We have to impact bargain, all elements of all those models, from the remote learning, from the position of a remote learning supervisor, because that is a teaching position, to what hy, what hybrid looks like for in-person, which is probably a little bit easier, and what hybrid looks like for remote, which I think is what you're asking me. I certainly have ideas, but I can, you know, and I, some of those I said this evening. I thought that it could be synchronous, part of it. I thought that if we were to engage in some type of buying a, a learning management system, that we could potentially train our staff and have them use that as part of the remote piece. It can be a simple, you know, so it, it can look, and it's very fluid and it can look different. But I, again, we've got to outline those broad parameters in our negotiations with our, with our unions to be able to say to staff people exactly what it's going to look like. What we can tell you and what the school committee can decide whether they want this evening is what a school day looks like. I did say to you that I believe I received verbal confirmation on the two schedules, middle and high school.
Right, so those are things that needed to be discussed union-wise. Again, I'm questioning and asking why we don't have a robust, remote learning, and again, I'd love to change the name to distance education, where is that? I don't see it anywhere.
Because we haven't negotiated.
Yeah, but you haven't negotiated some of these things, you have verbal agreements.
I do, I have a verbal agreement on two things. We've been negotiating, we've been meeting, but, you know, we have, there isn't an agreement and until a plan comes out and the union knows what you're doing, what are they negotiating? They need to know whether the school committee, what the plan or model is, and then they'll sit down and negotiate, because if you decide to do remote only, then there's nothing for them to negotiate about hybrid. So that's, that's kind of the process that generally you follow.
I understand that, but this, again.
All right, so Mr. McCall, what specifically are you looking for?
What I'm looking for is what does a full remote plan look like? We could have that sketched out, we could have a, a scenario of what that looked like. And if you read clearly in these, basically, what I read in here is people have two options. They can prick the hybrid model or they can do a remote learning that's self-directed. There's no talk in here about a full remote learning plan. And that's what we're tasked to do, decide hybrid or full remote learning plan. I don't see it identified anywhere, and with respect, Dr. Nash, I get it, yes, parts of it need to be negotiated.
Oh, okay, so, hold on, just a minute, just a minute. So, parents can make a choice. A full remote with something that, that we would hire the supervisor, but then the curriculum would come from.
Right.
An outside vendor.
Right.
So that's one option, and the other option is the hybrid, so that, that is the remote. And this, and I think in this, in this two weeks here, you say, okay, what's going to happen during those two weeks?
Who's overseeing the remote in those two weeks? Is that the academy?
No.
Right, so what does that look like?
So, 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 let's be clear, so you're looking at those two weeks as opposed to option B.
Exactly, so, again, we, we're tasked as a committee to pick one of two options. That's our task, either full, uh, remote or hybrid.
You can go both. As part of the hybrid, if parents, if parents can opt out.
What I said on this board two weeks ago is, is if we do go hybrid, a big piece of that is remote. So we really need to have a solid remote learning plan, right?
Right, but.
And when I read this stuff in here, it doesn't tell, you have the hybrid learning model or the remote, remote learning model, option two, a self-directed, independent, for parents who are going to elect the option two, you'll be asked to complete a choice form and we turn it to your building principal no, no later than August seventeenth. So when I read that, that's saying you either do hybrid or you do this remote learning all on your own with supervisors checking in with you.
Correct.
I don't see anything in here about full remote learning, which is something we were supposed to have a discussion about as a committee and, and take a vote on.
I'm confused on what you're looking for.
Confused what I'm looking for, I'm looking for what's remote learning look like full, because we're going to be in it for two weeks.
Right.
Potentially longer, and then if we do go hybrid, we could be back to full remote.
So week on, week off?
No, I'm talking, we could be full remote.
I understand that, but the model Dr. Nash looked at tonight was week, was the week on, week off?
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing everything. Maybe my committee members can help you.
I, I think what Dave's trying to say is, as a committee tonight, we could potentially vote to say, no kids are coming back to this school. We are going full remote, kids are staying home. So what, if we voted that way, what would that look like? And what you're saying, Dr. Nash, is.
It needs to be negotiated.
Majority of that needs to be negotiated.
Well, we know what it looks like from the format. Well, we know what it looks like from the format, that all students are going to be home.
Right.
So, then we negotiate that full remote and what it looks like. I presented two options this evening, because at your last vote, you said hybrid. And then we wanted, we knew we wanted to provide something for students who elected not to come back for any in-person learning. All right, I understand, Dave, what you're asking. And we did, we have not done that, because that was not the direction that the committee gave me. So, if we go, and plus, we need to negotiate that.
Parts of it, parts of it need to be negotiated.
Well, all of it.
Still a full workday.
It is, that's not what I'm talking about. I, I understand that.
So, there's still parts of it that need to be negotiated, just like parts of the hybrid do too.
At, all of the hybrid needs to be negotiated, both hybrid and remote. And in doing that, Dave, in, when you negotiate the remote, the remote piece of it, could very well be very parallel to what you eventually come up with as part of your full remote plan, if everything shut down, and you needed to do that. We will negotiate what that looks like for those two weeks. But I, I don't, that's not a separate option. That's what I, I know what you're saying, but it's not an option.
It is. There was three options initially, full back.
Yep.
Full remote or hybrid.
Right.
We ruled out full back.
Right.
And we did task you to focus on more on hybrid, but I know I specifically said that remote learning is a big piece in hybrid, or if we're going to just fully do it. And we really need to have a solid plan around that, because to no fault of anybody, back in March, the world changed.
Right.
And everybody just did the best they could, and we have an opportunity now to do it right. And that's what I was hoping to see more of. If you're telling me that's coming down the line, great, I can be patient and wait, I guess, yeah, that's, like, there's nothing else that can be done right now.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we need to focus on that.
Because that's a two-week piece in Phase Three.
It is a two-week piece. You're exactly right. It's two weeks, and you're, I don't disagree with you that that could very well be what happens. And that is very important as to what, what that looks like, as important as what the hybrid and the remote piece of that looks, look like. I don't disagree with you.
And I also felt too, if we did, if we had a solid remote learning plan, that kids who did, who felt uncomfortable coming back, if we were in a hybrid, could just participate like they would if they were on their off week in their remote, then they could just do off weeks, both weeks, and still be part of that direct classroom with their classmates, with their teachers. So, we didn't have to intertwine this academy.
Right.
You know, so those are other things that we had talked about too, so.
I'm just thinking, like, ideally, we're going to create a plan, like Dr. Nash is trying to lay out here, I think, with the hybrid model, and, you know, when it flips back and forth, that we could streamlessly, like seamlessly, I guess I want to say, flip a switch. Because we don't know what's going to happen. So, when I envisioned, and like, I kind of supported the hybrid model, my thought behind that was because ideally, we want our kids in school, but we can't have them in school full-time, because we don't have the capacity to have that six feet apart that we know we all need. So, by having the hybrid model, it gets us so we can at least get our kids in school and get that social, emotional stuff happening. But our teachers are also delivering instruction remotely. So, they're essentially going to be strong in both areas. They're going to be well-versed in both areas. They're going to have to be fluid in both areas. Our kids are going to have to adapt to both, which I think is a good thing for our kids, because essentially, um, we don't know when school's going to have to close down, and we're going to have to go fully remote. Or maybe we'll be blessed, and school doesn't have to close down, and our kids can be in the building more. You know, only time's going to tell. So, I think what we've done so far is kind of in the best interest of, of our community. I mean, we're trying our best. I know Dr. Nash has all these subcommittees working. Everybody's thinking about this stuff. There's honestly too much to think about. You know, it's like, you think about a little bit here, and then you go down that rabbit hole over here, and then you find out something else happens. So, I think to plan for that full remote learning, um, in itself, you know, you could go there, but then we would be missing an opportunity for getting our kids kind of back. But I think the remote learning thing is going to happen. It's going to happen. Our teachers already are well-versed in Google Classroom and other, you know, platforms that they used. And our summer program this year that has happened, that was launched, I don't know, Mr. P. could tell us, two, three weeks ago at our elementary schools. I heard Dr. Nash speaking to us about that before at our last meeting. That could be a piece of the remote learning for our elementary students. I think there's little pieces there, but they still got to get ironed out. But I think we're making a lot of progress. It's just.
Don't disagree. I think the, the work that's been done has been amazing. I'm a building principal. We're trying to figure out how to open up my building up.
Right.
And it is a monumental task.
Right, Mr. Canocchioli, we have faced the same task here in Oxford.
Yep.
We have to give Dr. Nash direction through votes on where to go to. So, what I'm hearing tonight, I'm hearing that the idea of the remote academy is we're hiring an out, an outside vendor was not within the original scope of what the school committee was looking for? Or do we, do we want to talk about that, or do we want to take this whole week on, a week off, focus on the remote side? There's, we're throwing a lot of information, which we got yesterday, and Dr. Nash worked weeks and weeks with the committee to put this in a very presentable form. So, what, what is the next stage? Where we go? Corey, go ahead first.
I just, I think you're confusing the, the remote academy. So, the remote academy is in a hybrid model. The remote that Dave's talking about is full remote. Everybody's gone. Now, our teachers are responsible for that remote model in some manner.
The outside, okay.
The outside vendor is for the hybrid plan, because our teachers are.
No, it's not in the hybrid plan.
No, that's a hybrid. That's if they choose that.
That's if they, if they opt out.
Which they choose.
On August, I'm not confusing it. If they send in, and then we had this discussion, Jenny's, in a, Tracy's enrolled in a chemistry class, and the parents don't like it, they want to send her back, and then all of a sudden, there's that three to four weeks of how can we make this fit? And unfortunately, Jenny may have to stay in there for the semester, because it just doesn't fit right back into the schedule of what they have. So, that's one of those options from there. That's going the outside vendor.
Right, that's while we're in a hybrid model.
One thing, yes.
Well, well, that's.
The rest of the school's in a hybrid model, and I've chosen.
I've said, you know, something, it's a student choice.
Right.
So, basically, you're taking that group of students, and you're just, in terms of guidance and everything else within the school, the busing, you've moved them right out of the equation. They're their whole separate group. It's a subgroup. And so, when you start counting where, Dave brought up the point before, and I, Paul, you might have said the same thing, do they still count as our kids on October one? And the answer was, yes, they do.
I don't know. That's.
That's something we have to look into, but I.
I don't know. I really would like, Justin, sorry, Justin, more work for you.
We just, I just got the info today. I haven't had to.
Yeah.
I said the same exact thing.
And I believe Tracy know that. You know, I'm going to put her name out there.
I talked, I didn't talk to her, but I saw her blog today. To be very careful.
Yep.
Because, not just an outside, because some of those are considered to be part of a homeschooling model. If it's a homeschooling model, you do not, then that has, but then homeschooling has to be approved through the superintendent's office. So, so that's a whole separate animal, so you have to make sure that those are categorized, if you go the remote side. So, I guess I, I need direction from the committee that we have to give to Dr. Nash.
I would like direction.
Yes, to make it easy, because here's our plan. And we talked about the hybrid model. Hybrid model being the week on, week off, and institute a two-week period, kind of phase-in period, and then go from there. Okay, Mr. Canocchioli asked a great question. During those two weeks, during those la, during that last time, that timeframe from September, Phase Three, what is remote learning going to look like?
So, what we will, if I could just go back and just clarify the three remote learnings, just because I think people are probably listening. So, I call the Remote Learning Academy the, the student choice. So, they've chosen that. There's the remote learning piece of hybrid. And then there is the remote learning if no one is in school because insurgence of what, which is kind of what we're practicing those two weeks.
Which is also in the first group.
Yes.
Of the one that's, again, goes to the outside vendor. They're not involved. If we go all remote. Huh?
No, that's our teachers' teaching. That's Remote Learning Academy.
Hold on, just a minute, just a minute. Remote Learning Academy. And so, if we go all remote, not Remote Learning Academy.
Our teachers will be teaching, and that's what Dave is talking about.
But how about the students that have already opted out?
Those who've opted out will continue potentially, I mean, we don't know. They could continue with the remote learning, or they may decide two or three weeks to flip at that and come into our, our remote learning. Oxford Public Schools' remote learning.
There's two different remote learnings going on.
Yeah, at that time, yes, at that time, you have people enrolled in the Remote Learning Academy. And if the entire district flipped, and we had to do remote learning for all students, would those students decide they want to move out of the academy and into your regular classroom teacher, teaching in remote learning? And I think what Dave is asking is, what does that model look like? And what I've said is, I presented two options. We, we do have to negotiate that. You're exactly right. I think it will be part of that discussion that's going to happen when we get into really defining the remote learning piece of hybrid, because I think it can be an extension of the remote learning piece of hybrid. But I do not have that for you this evening.
Okay, Paul.
Kind of my thoughts, and I mean, maybe you've thought about this, and maybe your principals have thought about this too, is ideally, they would be following the schedule that's already been set out. And if we do flip the switch and everything's remote, instead of that teacher having the two cohorts that are separate, they merge together for those weeks. So, the whole class is present. And then, if, I'm, you know, fortunately, I guess, we could say things are safe and kids can come back, the hybrid, you know, goes back the other way, where we have cohort A and cohort B. But that's why I want to see things seamless. So, I think we already did like fifty percent, or maybe more of the work, because you've already kind of created a schedule. You've already done everything. Our teachers would still teach in that same schedule, those same times, except potentially, Mr. Canocchioli, it could be fully remote. And so, maybe you have to negotiate what that looks like when you have all your students present at that same time. You know, maybe they're not teaching kids on the computer for a full, solid forty minutes. Maybe there's like, or ninety minutes, right? Ninety-minute class on the computer, our kids could lose their mind. I could lose my mind. I couldn't, I couldn't imagine. But maybe there's check-in points to that period. And sometimes, they're doing synchronous things and asynchronous things.
Right.
And, but I think every school, Mr. Canocchioli, I mean, right, it's going to be different. And each principal's going to have to come back to us with their different thoughts, that their teachers think at every grade level, because there can't be one plan across the district for that type of thing.
Well, if I could just say, no, the principals won't come back. They'll be part of the discussion.
Right.
For that plan. But I do agree with you. I think we need to, and I actually had this conversation this afternoon with the union president. It's going to look different at elementary, middle, and high. Now, here's the easier part about remote now. If we went full remote, because we got closed down, the difference between last time and this time, let's just take the high school schedule. You couldn't fit all your periods in, because there just weren't enough, there wasn't enough time in the day to do a class that way and do it. So, now you've got a longer block of time, fewer periods. You can follow that schedule. And, and he had to create the schedule like every other day. The same thing, I think, could happen at the middle school, because we've eliminated and we strengthened, we've stretched that time. It's, it's the elementary where you've got the problem. And we started to have that discussion of what that could potentially look like on certain days. But clearly, to outline how much time, what you're doing, you know, what, what a day might look like, what's the expectation for how many minutes? Because we didn't really do that. We did that in broad brush strokes last spring. In many instances, it was like two hours or something. And no one held us to that, because the state said, engage kids. We're more interested in making sure that you know that all kids can engage and so forth. But I think this time around, I don't disagree at all that we need to make sure we define that, because the expectations are different on parents, and they're going to hold us accountable in a much different manner, because two things. One, it's a regular school day.
Right.
And two, you're going to get grades. So, yes, we, we do have to go through and do that in our negotiations and define that. And we started to work on the hybrid piece, and you have to define the, you know, the in-person, which is easier, as well as the remote of that. And then we started to have a proposal that I had originally for remote learning, but we haven't gotten to that yet in discussions. And then now, with the Remote Learning Academy, I also have to get into discussions around the position. If the committee wants us to hire supervisors, I have to negotiate that, because it's a teaching position with them also.
But also, we, just in my own district today, we, we went over a full remote learning plan, what that looks like at the middle school level. Haven't had the negotiations yet, but we have our plan laid out, what it's going to look like, and then we're going to go to the table with them. Very well, right now, I don't know. My phone keeps blowing up, but maybe we've already approved it out in my district. I don't know. But the point is, we have a plan for that. We have a plan for the hybrid.
Right.
I know we tasked you for hybrid, but I asked specifically if we could really make sure we have a solid remote learning plan. I still don't know what that looks like. I get it. Now, you're going to do it. It's two weeks of time, could be longer. And who knows? It could be longer than that if we vote for remote.
There were different ways that I think districts and superintendents approached it. One was to put the model out first, and then negotiate it afterwards. The other was to put a general, more of a, a bigger picture schemer, and then negotiate, because either way, you could change it. So, I think every district approached it a little differently, you know.
But with respect, Dr. Nash, if I read this document that's on our webpage, it's basically hybrid model, or you're doing the academy. That's it. There's no other choice on here. That's what I read.
Well, there wouldn't be a choice at this point, until we had to close down totally for remote.
But then we're implying that we voted hybrid model in already. That's my point, is there's nothing in here with remote.
We, we voted a phased-in hybrid approach. A phased-in hybrid approach. That's, Dr. Nash talked about last meeting, that would start in remote learning. And you, that's when you specifically asked.
I asked, and I asked, and I said we didn't, but then we still have to make the final vote, because we hadn't even submitted anything to DESI yet.
No, we haven't, right, right.
And then we have till October tenth, after the thirty-first, to make our decision.
Well, we have submitted the preliminary plan. That was due the thirty-first. And then, this plan is due Monday.
Correct.
Right.
Good. So, let's, let's pause with that. And we're just going to look at calendar. We can, we can pick this up in a minute. The school calendar, you have your PD days, you have your start of school, you have your end of school. You set graduation, you set all your dates. I'm sure that everyone has a chance to read that. Can you pack it? Are there questions on the calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty-one sketch, uh, calendar?
My only question, Chair, is just the nineteenth, the PD day.
Nineteenth of.
March, I'm sorry.
Nineteenth of March, okay, yeah.
I just didn't know if it would make sense maybe to move it up for you guys, just in case there's something that comes up. I mean, you have that election day, I know, the third. I mean, does it make sense to piggy it back at there, maybe, third, fourth, second, third, I don't know. Just, you know, you're going to be a quarter in, and whatever model you're in, it might be a nice time to be able to reflect, or have some time to, I don't know. That was my only thing. It's, I'm not, I'm, you know, I would not approve it if it didn't get moved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to throw it out there that just kind of sits in the middle of March and.
It's been a tradition, I think, in the district. They've done either January or March. It might have fluctuated. We actually, before we moved one of the days, had a January day in there also. Of course, the November third was there anyway. So, I don't have a, you know, I don't know whether the principals want to weigh in on keeping a March or moving it, PD day?
Mr. Quinn, Mr. Palczarowski, any recommendations?
I have no preference.
No preference, no preference. Sometimes, I think it's been.
I don't have a preference.
Thank you, Amy. It is a long month, March, and I guess to break up some, break up construction a little bit.
I can tell you, from my district, we have used those, we have January and a March day, and used them very well for things that came up later in the year. And say, even to prepare for the next year, March is good.
No, listen, on a normal year, I, I agree.
Yep.
It's great to have space though. This isn't going to be a normal year.
Right.
We may not even get to March to have a PD day.
We ended up, you know, we had a PD day built in in May this past calendar year, and we didn't really utilize it well, because.
Oh, because you were in the middle of.
Anything else? Entertainer motion to approve Vice Public Schools' calendar twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So, moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess my only thought is, you know, we could revisit the calendar again if something comes up. We, and, and I guess it just makes sense to approve it. I mean, we might hear that your teachers might want to. that your teachers might want to weigh in on this, and somebody else might look at this, and it might come in front of us again.
We, I did bring it to the union.
Okay.
Yep, the union president.
I think, well, the key thing is how September is going to look, is for parents, for planning, for childcare, and, and we're getting emails, we get phone calls, where people are stressed on, on what am I doing with my child, what am I doing with child, how am I going to handle this? Right? But at least if we put it out there, tell them, here's the calendar, and that's all you ask is transparency. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Canaccioli.
Yes.
Also vote yes, five are affirmative. Calendar is passed, and Helen, please publish this. Thank you.
May I ask clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
With the phased-in model, and this would impact certainly the opening of school, it has a cohort group coming in, a sixteenth, and another one on the seventeenth, and then the PD. Would you rather see that changed, and I'll start with remote learning on the sixteenth, or would you rather us keep that and do it, call the orientation piece of it, where we bring the cohort groups in, even though the potential is, they may not be in for another two weeks, just to have that ahead of time, just to kind of acquaint them to how all things are going to look different, period, and then a time with our parents on Friday, as a PD day, but where teachers are here.
Go ahead, yeah.
Dr. Nash, I would certainly say from the elementary level, that having the kids come in and see what school's going to look like is a big benefit. I would, I would leave that as is, so those kids can.
It's just that, you know, parents are going to know that half of them are going to be in on one day as the opening, and so I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
September?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think that. That orientation piece is key, because what I've been trying to say is that, you know, kind of been connecting with Dave, the term remote learning, for everyone I've spoken to, has left a really bad taste in everyone's mouth. So I think that having the parents go into the school and hearing, I want the parents to hear from the teachers, the accountability piece, the fact that they will be notified if their child isn't showing up, because we know that parents will be at work and not necessarily sitting and making sure. I want the expectations for those students and parents spelled out clearly. I want there to be a schedule that's consistent, because as a parent, I never knew from day to day, what, when, how, and who. That really has set us up in people's minds, that this is not going to work. I think that that two-week in phase three gives us an opportunity to work out the bugs, to have everybody with every excuse be able to deal with that, so that if in fact we do go to hybrid, and then they flip the switch and we're out again, we don't have that. I can't get on Zoom, oh, my, you know, all of the excuses that people use to make themselves not accountable. So I think, I think we have to have the orientation for the clarification, so we all know what to expect, the students and the parents.
I would, I would ask on those days, that, that the teachers hand out their syllabus, syllabus, management plan, Google Classroom codes, hangouts, office hours. That we are going remote, teachers, let it be known, everyone in that building. We ask students, and ask every, every single person in the vision, adult, child, whoever it is, going to be held accountable. Like, there's none, like you're saying, oh, I did it. No, I thought this one was doing it. No. This is where you're going to be.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. So I ask for that day, that, that there is a, that a document does go out. Every child that goes in there, and we start to teach, here's, I'm your teacher, here's my email. Here's, here's, here's the class schedule. Here's the list of things you need if you go remotely. And I do have something on that later, too, I can bring up during my requests. The Google Hangout, the Google Classroom code, anything else that's going to, the office hours are huge, is when, during that Friday planning time, is a teacher available for parent comments.
Yeah.
I, I love the phased-in approach. I think that's one of the biggest positives right now, because of the orientation, like Mr. Burke said, all those valid points, parents and kids get to meet their teachers. I like the fact that we're remote learning for phase three for a bit. We all know that the governor has said, there has to be this chunk of time where people aren't traveling, and that, you know, we're all supposed to kind of be like in, in, I don't know what the term is anymore, I should know it, but like, not going anywhere, because. I just live it all the time, so I don't, I'm losing that part of my brain. But like, you know, this kind of enforces a quarantine in some respects, hopefully, the kids are kind of staying close to home. And then when they come in during phase, you know, five, if it makes sense, I mean, yeah, phase four, sorry, if this, I can't, I'm losing my brain. October fifth, it makes sense, and then our kids will be safe and not hopefully exposed to anything. So, you know, there's kind of a little bit of a quarantine time in there. So I like that layout. And, you know, to Mr. Canaccioli's point, we might be remote if things don't go well. But like, this way, at least, we're planning for the hybrid, we're hopefully going to get there with our kids, and, and parents kind of have a, an entry plan. I'm comfortable with voting on that phased-in approach right now, and, and with the hope of having full, you know, having a full hybrid model. And if it doesn't work, then, you know, the backup of the remote, like Mr. Canaccioli was saying, you know, that's, that's why I kind of see this as being like a seamless transition between both, because we're, we're probably going to have to go back and forth between both all year.
Mr. Canaccioli, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know I was part of a few of these discussions, I do like the phased-in approach, I like starting fully remote. I think we have to look at a couple different things. There's, you know, factors out in our state are changing slightly, but they're trending in the wrong way. I know initially, Governor Baker said phase four, that's when schools return, we're still in phase three, possibly going back to two, according to the pressure he's getting right now. We have a teachers' union across the state, unions that are pushing hard for full remote. And again, that's why I'm hoping for a solid plan. I'm not saying it's not going to get done, I was hoping to see more of it tonight. I do love this approach. I might want to stretch, and I would love to try to get away from phase, maybe reentry three, or reentry, just because phase confuses with state, the state language. But I do think we need a reentry plan, and it's got to start remote, and then go hybrid, and then go full, and what, in my opinion, and then what that looks like for timelines. I'd like to stretch it out a little bit longer, maybe the first quarter, as opposed to two weeks, and then reevaluate where we're at. But I'm open to, to starting full distance learning. I would love to change the name too, from remote.
And just to be clear, we're not, that is a plan, however, that's not in the, in the calendar, in terms of.
Correct.
We're not bound, those are, those are just.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Do you have anything original to add to that? I think you said it all.
Mrs. Forbes, anything else?
Uh, I, I love this right here, just the way it is, and I also am ready to vote tonight.
That's right, so I just have to make sure everyone's ready to come for a vote. Okay, so, I have two votes I'm going to have to take, actually, three.
Helen's waving you down.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I have had some parents reach out to me, asking if they could ask questions before what was taken. I didn't know if they wanted to entertain that there. I think they're remote.
Remote questions? Dr. Nash, you ready? Just three questions?
Sure.
We'll take a few, we can't guarantee an answer. There, there is a Q and A scheduled for next Tuesday evening, but we'll take a couple and see if, before we go.
Uh, six-thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Q and A at six-thirty.
Please identify yourself and your name, and your address for the record.
We got to put the volume back up.
Okay.
I would send you.
Justin, Mr. LeDoux, with the monitor?
They want to type in their comment.
Maybe let them know.
So many of the people who have questions are on the phone, they keep texting me, they couldn't get on.
There's quite a few people that are muted.
If they want to type in their questions into the chat, I'm reading, I have the chat up right here, and I can read them into the record.
Let's do that, thank you, Mr. Canaccioli. Type into the chat, Mr. Canaccioli.
You want to type into your, type your questions in, Justin? Let them know, type their questions in, their name does show up, and then I can.
Perfect, thank you, Amy. As we're waiting for those, the three votes are going to be, the two, the two options, you hybrid and the remote, which we saw tonight. The second vote we're going to have is on the school day, the change for the elementary, and the third will be the schedule change at the, at the middle, middle and high school level. So those are the three votes that we are pending, that Dr. Nash outlined those. So if you want to review notes, if you want to ask any questions for those, those will be coming up, and I'll ask a lot of questions then. But right now, we'll take questions from the public. That's all, we'll go three votes, right?
If you just want to type your questions, and then we can read them. I did type that in the chat, it just, it just popped, okay. Sorry. Well, there's one here. Will children be, it's from Keely Comtous.
Oh, yes, yep.
Will children be penalized during all this transition until we find out what works, doesn't work for our families?
For attendance.
For attendance.
Oh, penalized for attendance?
Yeah, that's all she wrote. Do you want to clarify that?
Attendance for like a daily.
Well, whether you're remote, or whether you're in session in a hybrid learning model or a remote learning academy, attendance is taken. So, I'm not sure if that answers her question.
Justin, maybe if you mute yours and I unmute mine, and maybe I can talk to them, and they can answer it.
Yeah.
Hi, if anybody has any questions, please just unmute yourself, identify your name, and ask your question.
One question here, what about band and chorus?
You have, band and chorus?
Outside, so.
Okay, was that a question?
Band and chorus, yes.
The recommendation, do you want me into the band and chorus?
May, I'm off, I'm off, I'm off.
Dr. Nash, band and chorus in sports.
Okay, so, okay, so first of all, let me deal with sports. The MIAA, who is the governing body for student athletics, will be making some recommendations by September fourteenth. So at this point in time, we do not know what, if any, sports will be running in the fall. But right now, everything is on hold until at least that date. And it may be that sports will start up, or they may not. With respect to band and chorus, those can still be part of a school day. There are very strong recommendations that those be online, and if they are in person, that there are addition, there's additional guidance with respect to distancing, and the recommendation that any particular course where there's respiration, like band, chorus, dance, become outside, and therefore are able to have a ten feet, I believe, is the recommended distance that they would have to be. No sharing of instruments, of course, and wearing masks.
From Amber Conway, will the voting be for each school, or for the entire school system?
The recommendation this evening is a K-12 recommendation. So, the recommendation to the school committee is not split by schools, but it is a K-12 recommendation of two different models.
Does anyone know if the committee will be voting this evening on going remote, fully, or hybrid model? Yes, that is our plan, it's on there, we will be doing.
Right.
That was earlier, so. I do not see any other questions coming in, Chair?
Okay, thank you. All right, the first item is, I would entertain a motion to approve Dr. Nash's plan as written, backed up with presentation and dialogue tonight, the points noted, as to the phased-in fall reopening, as outlined on the board as direction, with the first day of, with the open house being on calendar for the sixteenth and seventeenth, and the first full day of school would be September twenty-first, which will be remotely.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
It just came to my mind about the orientation. How do we do that? I'm assuming not all families are going to come in the building at the same time.
Small groups, if you want, live. Right, we're going to have to figure out how we can do that in small, small groups throughout the day, probably. I mean, that's, that's the challenge that you've got.
Is that going to give us enough time?
I don't know, we may have to work some opportunities in on those remote learning, um, excuse me, on those two days where the cohort groups come in.
Okay.
You know, while the students are in the class, maybe, they can meet, you know, with the, with the principal or assistant principals, so. Not sure exactly how that could work out, but we'll have to work that out.
Could you repeat your?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to change the motion, I'm going to reword it. Entertain a motion to incorporate two options for back to school. The phased-in hybrid approach, as Dr. Nash spoke about this evening, including the hybrid model, and the second one being a distinct, separate entity, online virtual learning academy, remote learning academy. Can I entertain that motion?
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. We have two, okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve two options for the start of the school for Oxford Public Schools. The first being the phased-in hybrid model, the second being a distinct, separate model of remote learning academy through a known vet, through a, another entity, but would include a supervisor from Oxford Public Schools.
I'll make that motion.
Can we have?
Yeah.
Discussion, or?
Yeah.
I want second of the answer.
I need a second for discussion.
I.
Did I make the wrong motion?
I'd second it for discussion, but I, I guess I want discussion, like, I'm not comfortable voting for a remote learning option yet, that we don't know exactly who the vendor is, how much the cost is going to be, things like that, if we're.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Could I entertain a motion, or do we have to?
No, 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 we, we try a second out, we try, second with brother motion, we can go on, yeah.
Dr. Nash, like, we're not going to have that before the tenth.
Correct.
We have to submit a plan.
Right.
Some models.
Right.
Every school district is going to have to work on the cost afterwards, we're just not going to have that.
So what we have to say tonight is, we would like a hybrid model that includes a choice for parents to do their own full remote, well, not their own, but a full remote academy, and then the details of the remote academy are going to have to be worked out.
It's two options. Either option A, you stay with Oxford Public Schools, and a phased-in remote learning, which looks like that up there, or B, you're going to the remote learning academy, which has yet to be totally identified.
Right.
Would I entertain a motion?
Hold on, hold on.
I'm losing, I'm losing the track here.
What do you got?
So I, I, I want to make a motion.
You would so move that.
To adopt a full remote learning plan to start the year, feeding into a reentry plan to hybrid. So we would be voting and adopting a full remote learning plan to start, which is what that phase tells us, and then looking to go to a hybrid. I don't think we need to include anything with that.
Academy.
Academy.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Just a question for clarification. Are we, or are we not required to offer a full online academy option? I know we're not voting on that, and it's not part of the motion, but I'm under the impression that we have to offer that.
You have to prepare a continuum of three types.
Okay.
All right. Some people are full remote.
Right.
Because that's what they choose to be. Some people are hybrid.
Correct.
And then, you know, some can bring all kids back.
Right, right, right.
And do it that way.
Okay.
Full person, for maybe a hundred percent, or for some of their grades, or whatever.
But we do have to provide that option, full remote for parents who make that choice. Even if we, the school committee, adopt this hybrid model, we are still required to provide that, correct?
It has to be an option.
That's just.
At some point, but right now, motion was to, motion was to.
I said that. No, I was clear, I said that, I understand, that's not the motion on the table. I just wanted a clarification.
We were charged from DESI to develop, you know, our preliminary plans addressed three different types of learning. One with the safety restrictions, one hybrid, and, and one fully remote. And then the school district, and it's a local decision as to which model or models you want to adopt.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think within, within this model September, the way I had envisioned it is if we have a full remote plan that's working, you know, that we've, you know, vetted out and we have, and we do a great job to start, and then if we do go hybrid, to me, I don't see why some kids just can't stay in full remote at that point through our school.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, right.
So we don't have to even worry about an academy. They're just going to keep their online learning continuing as hybrid. That's.
Oh, so you're saying no academy? You're saying all the full remote.
To me, if we do the full remote learning correctly, I shouldn't use the word correctly. If we do it, you know, well, I guess correctly is the right word. It's getting late, whatever. I think if we do that to a, to a degree where we're delivering great instruction, great opportunities for kids these first two weeks, maybe four weeks, maybe six weeks, whatever it is, and then we go to hybrid and there's people unsure of what to do at that point, to me, I don't see why they just couldn't stay in a full remote model because we're going to be half, half the week is going to be remote anyways. They could just continue to stay.
Okay.
Can I ask, to read back the motion, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To adopt a full remote learning plan feeding into a reentry plan to a hybrid model.
So in the, in the motion, and I hear, and I like to train a thought, Dave, because it does tell you, like, how I envisioned as well, group A, group B. Hey, you know something, I'm staying home all the time, I'm doing that. You have an outlier that wants to go fully remote, the parents demand they want to go fully remote, that's covered in that plan, it's covered in that motion as well, too.
Okay.
It's not specific, but if, if, on a case-by-case, it's like, you know something, this really isn't working, goes off to that, virtualize it as long as we can.
The only challenge when you don't give a kind of a timeframe is that parents might think right now that we're just going to stay on remote.
Oh, the phased-in approach, though.
It, okay, all right.
We're using, we're using, we talked before using this as a guide.
Then we're looking at a phased-in, excuse me, a remote learning for a window of time right now to be determined, right now, we're saying two weeks, but it could be a little bit longer.
Right. If we approve the motion tonight, we could still work on timeline after, right?
Yeah.
Other than I think parents would want to know for planning purposes sooner than later, you know, as far as the timeline, because they're saying, oh, my gosh, I'm already got a plan through September for remote. So if it's going to be longer, I need to know that. So I just want to clarify that people don't go panicky and think that the schoolmate tonight votes for a full remote. It's a full remote for a shortened period of time with a plan, hopefully, to move to a hybrid.
But even when they get to the hybrid model, they're still going to have to figure out what they do with their children for a week when they're not in school. So it's the same, you know, there's still the same concerns.
Right, but our goal is to get to that hybrid model. Absolutely. I mean, it's everybody's goal to do that, I agree.
Right, and we just want, we have to keep everyone safe, the numbers are going around, why?
So after a two-week period, I'm just going to play devil's advocate if I might, because I want, I have to, that a parent decides to stay in remote learning, we move to hybrid. So our teachers are teaching hybrid, where they have students in front of them and, you know, they're flipping the week on, week off, and those other students, they're, they're teaching. So we're envisioning that, that group that doesn't want to come back full-time is already in your class and you would just continue to teach them.
And then come maybe Columbus Day, you know, some things will, and.
So now they're fully, now they're fully remote and then not flipping. So now I'm planning for that group in addition to the ones who've come back. Let's say I had a class of 20, and we're now in the, we're now in the hybrid model where I get 10 in and 10 out. And of that class of 20, when I went to the hybrid model, five of them decided to stay in remote. So they're out remote every single week now. The teacher is planning week on, week off, and then has to plan for those who are out permanently, if you will, kind of.
Wouldn't that be your option, see?
What?
Wouldn't that be your?
Well, that creates.
Sort of cohort, that's like special ed anyways, but at the same time, I don't know if we would want to create another group that would go with that cohort.
And again, I, sorry, Paul.
No, I'm, I just kind of jumped in.
I just, I just think, again, in, in the full laid-out remote learning plan that will be in for at least two weeks, most likely longer, right? Within that plan, teachers are going to be delivering direct instruction with accountability, with grades, with attendance, with all of that, to all their kids. So that when we do go to the hybrid, so they're well-versed in doing that at that point. So then when we do go to the hybrid model, half-on, half-in, they have now just delivered instruction to their kids for multiple weeks potentially remotely. So it, it could be a more seamless transition than I think you're thinking, but maybe I'm not thinking.
But when they're flipping, so if I'm doing as a teacher, I'm teaching the same lesson this week and this week when I flip, and now when I have someone out, they're getting, could potentially get a repeat of, of the lessons. It depends on how that teacher structures.
Well, that's why I don't understand why we can't, when the kids come into the building, those 10 that come in, why can't the ones that are home be remote with them? We just did it for three or four weeks prior. So then when those people, if somebody stays fully remote, they just keep going remote both weeks. The kids who come in, get the instruction in front of the teacher, then they go home the next week. My point is, why can't we just keep it the same?
I hear, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to think, yeah, I'm trying to think through.
So it's just the same lesson, you don't have to.
But they're getting that same lesson for the same two weeks. Yeah, they're getting it twice.
Because what Dave's saying, as a classroom teacher, if I was looking at this, here's my 10, here's my 10. This week we're doing some sort of economic theory. Do you have it remote, you have it in class. The things, the same things are going out, short videos are going out that I wish, even if I talk in class or if I could stream it during class, we're in the same thing. Next week, we're going, we're really concentrating on scarcity and then the following choice, but it's all seamless right through.
Right, the same, the kid.
Because if a kid's.
You're flip-flopping kids who choose the hybrid, but the kids who want to stay full remote can still just stay remote. Teachers have already been delivering instruction virtually now for, again, it's going to be multiple weeks. That's why I was really looking to see a plan that.
And because why, because why I believe in that is because you're going to have very high attendance rate. Your attendance rates can be sky-high. You're telling kids, you have, you have to use the sneezes, sniffles whenever I school. Hey, I'm going to go home and do, I'm going to stay home and do my work today. I don't feel like going to school. There's no, there's going to be zero accountability in terms of attendance. The attendance is okay, you don't show up here, you do it online. Yeah, I think it's going to be the same lesson. I mean, again, teachers, taught in your own classroom. However, you figure out your system, but as a teacher, a 30-year teacher, that's how I would teach it.
Right, I think it would be different on the elementary level. I don't know if Mr. Quinn or Mr. P want to talk to that, but if I have students in front of me one week and I'm giving them their individualized instruction while they're in front of me and preparing them to go home the next week and just see me that brief time in the morning and then have activities the rest of the day, if I have a student that does not come in front of me both weeks, I'm not able to give them that instruction that they need.
Yeah, it's definitely different, but I think, I think, again, we could leverage, you could, we can leverage, we wouldn't have to hire, you know, well, maybe we still have to hire as many people, but that's where we leverage some power professionals to work with some of those small groups, not teach, work with them while that teacher does more direct, you know, one-to-one or two-to-one with those kids virtually, right? So there's, we build in that time for them to maybe do more of that direct teaching.
September.
Because I think, would you rather have a kid doing the remote academy?
If the parent chooses that they're not going to send this child to school at all.
That's a whole separate question. September, go ahead. Mr. Chris, September.
Working all on their own.
If the parent chooses that.
Go ahead, September.
I was just going to say, I thought that we had discussed this prior and it's essentially requiring more of the teachers than what we are allowed to ask them to do time-wise and/or job description-wise. If I'm not mistaken, we've had this discussion about trying to do that. So the teacher would be, and I had actually during those discussions had asked about the possibility of the teacher teaching live and everybody being on Zoom together. Because trying to teach live and remote in the same week was, I believe, not feasible for them in their scheduled workday. And I don't think, Dave, that that's something that we're going to be able to negotiate.
I'm not saying that, September. I'm not asking them to do that. I was not asking them to do that.
Okay.
Teach the same lesson. We're going to be, we're going to be virtual the first two weeks. So they're teaching to all their kids. They're teaching to everybody. Then when we go hybrid, they're going to be teaching half and half. To me, I'm not sure why we just can't teach all, just have half your kids in front of you, half virtual.
We can't mandate that, though. Remember, we cannot mandate.
Who goes?
We mandate curriculum, teaching methodology is.
Parents' choice.
That's, that's building principle, that's well beyond us. But if, but if we set up the parameters and it's negotiated, this is what it's going to look like.
Right. I mean, obviously.
Teacher to figure out, you know.
That, that piece would have to be, yes.
And we get, and they have, and we have, there's 10 days to put together some solid PD. It's a long time.
But Dave, I'm sorry, Dave.
Paul, go ahead.
I just, I don't want to cut you off, Christopher.
No, it's your turn.
I was just going to say, I always have to go back to what's in the best interest of students? What's in the best interest of kids? I don't think if we set up a model where kids can be remote while, while we're having kids hybrid, unless they're in that cohort that was outlined by our special ed director where it's because they're high needs and they're medically fragile or they have, you know, specific learning disabilities, then they need to be in the building every day. That's one thing. We don't want to make our kids more disconnected. The whole point of going to this hybrid model is to get our kids in the building, getting at least 40% of their education actually really happening with teachers. That's where the best instruction happens. I don't want to create a model where I'm going to entice some students to try to learn with our teachers online if we've got kids in the building, if that makes any sense. Only because I don't think it's in the best interest. I think if parents opt to do that, like Dr. Nash outlined, then there's that academy. And if parents have it in their mind that their kids need to do that, you know, there's extenuating circumstances, health, whatever, we already went over that, then that's the best way to do it. For us to try to design and create something like that, I think it's too taxing on our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our families, honestly. Because then we're giving them one more option that might not be in their best interest. I think having this hybrid model with this phased-in reentry is probably the best way to go for me. I don't want to kind of think of trying to entertain remote at the same time for a cohort that parents are confused and we got to make this simple. And I think we're blessed because we have a board with a lot of educators on it. I don't want to muddy the waters for people tonight. I want to make it clear and defined.
I hate, I didn't.
That's just my thought.
I'm looking at this, how, as part of this, is a contingency. Student travels out to an area, come back, if they go away for Thanksgiving and they come back, now they're self-quarantined 14 days, they can't come to school. Still want them online for two weeks.
And that might happen?
If, if a student, if a parent, you know, if they have self-quarantine for any, any reason whatsoever through exposure, by having that online model that, they're there, there's a running nose, they're not allowed to school, run the temperature. You know, our absentee rates will be sky-high. That's how I see it. Corey, you have something else you want to add?
No, I was trying to clarify, Dave, you're picturing then that the students who are home full-time are attending a full day's class virtually? They're with their teacher virtually the full day?
Yeah, just like they're going to be for two, three, four weeks, depending on how long Phase 3 is. Yeah, that's how I envisioned it. But you're right, there's some good points brought up.
These, these teachers also have students in front of them in the classroom, right?
Right, yeah. No, but there's good points you guys brought up.
Yeah, I don't see that as feasible.
That's something that could go with.
Every answer creates funny questions.
Oh, no.
And remember, it was, I mean, if we're providing technology, you have so many virtual things. Yes, it's not going to be the same, it's not going to be perfect.
Right.
But it's holding people accountable to be where you're supposed to be.
And a good point, too, Dan, that you brought up, if somebody is sick and has to, or went away and has to quarantine, then, you know, Dave's option of being able to stay home and do both weeks in a row online covers that they still get the education and they still, we still get the 14 days.
That would be the new way of sending two weeks' worth of homework.
Yes.
You'd say, instead of me sending you the two weeks, you're just going to be virtual for those two weeks. And that's how you have to handle it.
And I guess it gives, it's a good option to keep the kids who are in school safer from the travel.
The interesting part about that would be, how does that teacher design those two separate weeks? Because if they're redundant and they're not different, you know, so it may not, they may be replicating, they may not. It may be information that they needed to know this week in school to be able to do this week.
Right.
That's the other thing. So you can't just do it the same. That's the problem you have because the teacher is designing it. So if I teach foundations and have to do all of this this week before you can go out and do that, then I can't do it both because you didn't get this yet.
Right.
So that presents the challenge.
I believe that's why the commissioner built that many days in.
No, I don't think so.
I believe that, I believe those days, they answer those questions. The principals and departments, they, you know, I like to see some plums. Okay, so have we had that vote yet?
No.
Haven't had any vote. But I need to be clear, though, because I'm not sure that, I know, I'm not clear.
Okay, all right.
The motion on the table is not include the remote academy, correct?
Correct.
That's just naturally there.
Correct.
Well, it's not naturally there, it is a separate.
All right, so I will withdraw my second. You want to draw your motion?
Me.
Then I'm a submissary.
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve two options. A hybrid model, a phased-in hybrid model, and a remote academy.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
We'll do a second. Further discussion.
Yeah, we're back to where we were.
That's where we started this.
This is exactly where we were.
A lot less words. Yeah, that's back where we were. You have two options.
Basically, it's her plan, Dr. Nash's plan.
This is Dr. Nash's plan.
But we have to tell, like, the hybrid plan is what we're building towards. We're starting remote, which she has in her plan.
Yeah.
Right, but we have to identify to the community that we're starting remote. We have to tell DESI we're starting remote. It's.
That's in the plan.
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to send the phased-in plan and tell them we're starting remote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're voting on.
Yeah, I think, I think it's in this document, I mean, somewhere in here in narrative. Not the deadlines, but, but I provided you.
I'm sorry.
Kind of, you know, the model, but I.
Yeah.
I think it's somewhere written in, in the actual document itself.
If I may, again. Also, in your narrative, Dr. Nash, it says these dates are contingent on debt.
Yeah.
So we are looking at exactly what you're saying, Dave. A phased-in opening, which we are going to send to DESI and say, we're doing a phased-in opening. The goal of getting to hybrid.
Sorry.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's why I think you've got to identify one.
They could, but I think.
No, we need it.
I mean, I, I think with the lack of guidance that came up, talking to Dr. Nash with this and this conversation would be amazing with the lack, with the lack of direction.
Fully remote.
And this is where it's going.
And because of this is.
That's what I'm saying.
It is, but that.
I, I hear what you're saying. Dave, I hear what you're saying, it's remote up until that date and then it's hybrid, with the hope to be hybrid.
Right.
Right.
So I hear what you're saying, to be very clear to the community.
Yeah, just, you know, that's the other thing.
The plan is, but we are having an orientation where we are bringing parents in. You know, we are bringing students and families in.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we're kind of doing something that's a little bit non-traditional, but I think it's in the best interest of everybody. But I, I get what you're saying, it's remote for a certain amount of time.
Two weeks.
And then it's hybrid.
Right.
Hopefully, unless we get news that it's not.
No, it's not mentioned in the motion, that's my own concern.
But it's a phased-in.
It's phased-in, you said hybrid.
A phased-in fall, a phased-in fall out. Take it, read back the motion, you have to add a word to it.
Samantha.
It was to approve two learning options. Number one, a phased-in hybrid opening, and number two, the remote academy.
So maybe we define what phased-in is?
Phased-in remote.
It's hybrid.
All right, have a phased-in, hold on, hold on.
Choosing the first thing.
Would you, would the word phased-in remote to hybrid work?
Yes.
There we go.
There you go, that's what I'm saying.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Forbes, you're amending that motion? I will amend the motion, yes. Mr. Burke, you're seconding the amendment?
I will second that.
And read it back, please.
Okay, to approve two learning options, number one, a phased-in remote-to-hybrid fall opening, number two is a remote academy. Perfect.
I'll say, well, would you? Thank you. Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canacoli?
Yes.
And yes, five in a firm, motion passes.
Phased-in, remote, to hybrid, and remote academy.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next motion, I entertain a motion to adjust the elementary school day schedule by one hour daily.
I'm not feeling so good about it. I'm just being honest, I don't, I, it makes me feel uncomfortable in so many ways, only because how are families gonna do it?
We don't have a motion, so we don't need to, we don't need to discuss it until it.
So I have a motion. And I'll turn to the motion.
I think, if I can just speak up, that is not necessarily something you have to have for August 10th, Dr. Nash, or is it? The actual, the hour change in the schedule?
I'm sending this document in, so I would have to adjust the document because it includes samples of the schedules, you know, proposal of this, what the schedule might look like.
But they approved your document and you changed that timing later, they're not gonna change the plan.
We, they know that there are gonna be certainly adjustments, and you can send in a plan and they could say nothing about it at all, because you can adjust it at the local level, obviously, the schedule.
So can I suggest then that this further discussion amongst your administrative team about what that may or may not look like, and then we can vote on that at another time?
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is that you want me to go back and look at the elementary schedule. So I guess my question is this, just for, for us to look at it, are you adverse to the fact that we would have to, so you're not, you don't want to start the school day later than normal? So that would mean that we would have to really try to find ways internally that we could potentially work in some time, so.
If you may, if you, if you come back to us after discussion and say there's really no other way to do it, I think we can entertain that, but I think our preference is what we're saying is.
Yep, okay, absolutely.
Alright, no action?
I second that.
Don't motion, don't, okay, second, I would entertain a motion to approve the, approve the change in the secondary level schedule.
I'll make the motion to approve the changes.
I'll second that.
Prove the second discussion. Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, when would the change, is this for when the hybrid starts?
Yes, when we go and, well, no, I'm sorry, let me take that back. It would start those, the day that we start teaching, kids start teaching whatever model they're in.
So the, so that, this would be the remote learning?
Yes, yes.
Their schedule is set up beautifully for the remote, so, okay.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canacoli?
Yes.
Now, well, yes, five in a firm of that schedule change is noted and approved.
And I just want to note, make sure, as I said, I think I had an affirmative from the union on the schedule, but I haven't got it in writing, so I just wanna make sure you're aware of that, believe that will be all set.
Okay, also in our, Dr. Nash, you're still up, also in our packet, we received the job description for the health and safety monitor. I don't have a chance to read that.
We don't have family.
It's been talked about this evening, questions for Dr. Nash on this? Yep, Pal, go ahead.
The anticipated cost of filling all these positions, what would it be again? How much money?
Page two.
Page two, thank you. No, I mean, like, how much?
Lost to twenty-two, Justin, do you remember when we ran that?
We did.
Uh, wait a minute, I think I have it in here. I think we were looking at twenty-two monitors, this is figuring at twenty-two. At thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, four hours a day, a hundred and eighty days, is two hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, and then controversial thought. Oh, yes, stipends or something that we negotiate with the union, I mean, if we're looking.
Well, it's not so much stipends, it's who's free. So you can negotiate a stipend, but they're not gonna be free to supervise this during this time, potentially, because you can't have elementary, they're teaching all day. Where secondary, assigned duties, right now, currently they're assigned bathroom and lunch duty, there's no lunch, but some of these other areas are recess and things like that. So right now, these potentially, remember, you wouldn't be hiring back your lunch and recess monitors because you wouldn't need them, so there'd be a little bit of savings there, not a lot, but you wouldn't necessarily, at every level, have someone to do all of these types of duties, more around health and safety. And then my question is, do you want teachers doing that?
Sorry, so to clarify, these would be your lunch and recess monitors?
Yes, we wouldn't need to bring those back, we would, you know, have these people do that.
Right.
Right.
So it could be those.
Could be those employees, but, right, could be someone else who doesn't want that.
If I could just ask, Justin, I always put, I hate to put you on the spot, any idea, a rough number of what we spend on those lunch and recess monitors?
Current positions?
Correct.
I wanna say approximately four, four to five thousand per school, per year.
Oh, that's it?
How many do we have, Justin, do you know, maybe the, Rod knows.
I am at JP right now, four lunch and recess people.
And how many?
Lunch and recess, two lunch.
How many hours a day?
Uh, they're four, they're two hours a day.
Okay.
Um, eleven to one.
Okay.
And mine is just, it's two hours and fifteen minutes, because we have an extra lunch.
Okay, and that's at the thirteen dollars an hour?
Yes. Excuse me, it's currently twelve seventy-five, it's gonna go up to thirteen fifty this January.
January one, right, okay.
And I think they have them at the middle and the high school as well, I'm not sure if they're.
And roughly, I have no.
Just the middle school, middle school has them for lunch.
No, does also replace crossing guards as well?
No.
Kind of something different.
That's different, out of the, okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you for that, Justin.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
And this is, I'm gonna go over well here, I'm assuming with your union, but can I ask what your teachers do? So they have a contractual lunch, which they could have while their children are at lunch or recess.
Correct.
What are they doing during the other time?
They get a thirty-minute, that's, that's, that's what they get, they're thirty-five-minute contractual lunch and recess.
So the students' lunch and recess combined is thirty-five minutes?
It's forty, and then they, yeah, and so they have thirty, they have thirty minutes of contractual, then they come back, or they bring, they stay with the kids for the first five minutes.
Okay, I get you, so the lunch and recess combined is only forty minutes total?
Right, and then they have a duty period.
Yep.
Yeah, which is probably special, yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, so the schedule's just different.
So, um, one thing that comes to mind is a lot of schools right now are changing lunch to make it like forty minutes, and then tacking on more time for recess, because the kids need math breaks. So they're increasing times, and I mean, obviously cutting down a little bit of time on learning there. But if we're building in more time for things like this, there potentially could be more time for people to have like breaks, and staff might volunteer to take a duty on some days. I know, I mean, maybe they won't, but I kinda think.
Lunch is for half of the students, so you're gonna have, you know, less.
I know, there are days where you don't have a lunch, because you're covering a duty, I mean.
But also why would you, I was just about to.
Well, it depends if you.
Negotiating committee.
Okay, but I'm gonna, I work where this happens, so I guess it depends on every district. Different districts, different things, I mean, we're living through a pandemic here, and I'm, I'm asking for people to think outside the box, and this might be a very good thing for our whole community, because our kids are gonna have a connection with people that they know, as opposed to how many monitors, twenty-two strange new people coming into our building?
Well, that's, that's what we had as our initial number, certainly the committee can decide to do less than that. But I would just ask that you look at all of the supervisory duties.
I get it.
You know, it's quite a few of them, and it was based on the discussion around how do we really ensure, you know, the health and safety of kids in this, in this in-person learning, whatever it looks like.
Dr. Nash, did you say that the bus monitors, or maybe Justin said, I can't recall, are hired by them?
Yes. Durham would hire them, yes.
So just to kind of Pal's point, and, you know, maybe you guys have discussions with them, would it be possible maybe to coordinate, and if we could hire the, like, bus monitors who for like, say, the middle school bus monitors could come in and do this job too? So they'd come in on the buses with the kids, and then they would do the in-class, you know, in-school duties. So you cut, you could cut down on the numbers, and then that would give, to Pal's point, that these people more of an opportunity start to get to know the kids, and they, you know, they familiar face, so. I don't know if there's a way, it just would limit the number we'd have to hire, you'd have to pay, you know, they'd get a few more hours, but it would limit the number, because I just think that's thirty-three people potentially is.
Let me just back up, I missed the chair.
Go ahead.
My apologies, I checked the budget out, it was, uh.
Thank you.
Much substantially higher than that.
I thought that's, it'd really allow.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's one person. JP School's eighteen thousand a year for the, I believe he said four.
Four, two hours a day.
Correct, Barton, I think it's two-point-five hours a day, that's twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And then, uh, middle school's eleven thousand, high school does not have them.
So still not as much as I hoped, thank you though.
Yeah, excuse me. And now to your point, Mr. Canacoli, the, I have asked them for pricing, traditionally it's been about twenty-five dollars an hour, but we only get one, we get one for one bus. I'm still trying to wrap my head around how we're going to do this, because it's not in our contract. Now, if I just do the quick math, it's well over a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, just for the monitors. So there's procurement laws that we have to adhere to, so my next stop in the next few days is to speak to the inspector general's office and our colleagues to figure out what they're doing in their districts. We would like to contract the services out, it'd be the easiest thing, because we can pull the plug on it. So say, we, we go to full remote learning and we don't need these, but we can say, well, sorry, we don't need you anymore. Whereas if you have an employee, what are we gonna do with that person, first of all, and secondly, we have, we tried to keep them at the, I'll say three-point-nine hours a day, but it's nineteen-point-five hours a week. So they're, so they don't receive health benefits, because once you add a family plan on it, that's an extra twenty grand on top of that. So it can add up very quickly, so that's why we have so many of them, is because we have a lot of people working at a very small, limited time. So I understand what you're saying, I, we are gonna have to think outside the box on this with staffing. This is just my own thoughts, I haven't really ran this by anyone, because again, if you're gonna contract that service, we need to go out to bid, and it's gonna be well over fifty grand. We can do an emergency procurement, but you can't really say procrastination is a reason for an emergency. But I could use the argument, well, jeez, they just gave us the guidance, what are we supposed to do in a month? Ideally, we'd like to contract the services, that way we, it's just more flexible that way. I understand what you're saying, it'd be great to have one seamless person, but then now you're running into like a benefit situation.
Well, yeah, I think also though, it's who do they work for? They're hired through Durham, and now you're asking them to come in and work for the school district, so I don't even know.
I'm saying hire the same person, Durham hires them for the bus, and then they get on the bus.
But I think they work, well, how many hours do they work? You said something about.
Traditionally, a monitor is just under six-point-five hours a day, because you gotta figure if they're doing three, uh, three bus runs in the morning, they're doing almost two-point, uh, almost three hours, just over three hours in the morning.
Would this be two separate jobs then? They're working for the bus company and they're working for us?
But they're working six-point-five hours a day that we're paying them for.
For the bus.
Well, we're paying Durham to do that, yeah.
We're trying to.
Yeah.
That's a tough figure out. Pal, go ahead.
I'm just going back to like trying to keep these things separate, and then go back to our teachers. So our teachers sometimes have, they might be a chair of, you know, math, whatever, certain subjects, or they might be team leaders, or they might be different things. Maybe this is, you know, you're the essential duties and help monitor, chair, committee, group. Teachers that are gonna step up, I'm not saying that this is not a huge sacrifice, this is like a tremendous thing, but there are some districts where every staff member is doing this, and they're all equitable, because they're all sharing it as a union, because they know they gotta do it to make things better for them and their community and their kids. I don't want twenty-two strangers that will have to be contact traced, coming into our schools, working with our kids. I want our kids to have a social-emotional connection to their teachers. It's the teachers that are gonna make the, they're gonna know, bringing a medical problem, an injury, immediately to the attention of the nurse. If a kid falls down and has a seizure, God forbid, or something happens, the teacher knows that that kid has that IEP or five oh four, or whatever they know, and they know that they're medically, they have a medical plan.
Pal, you said this earlier.
I don't think they're gonna.
How can we mandate this for our teachers to do this?
I, again, I don't.
It sounds really, it sounds like a really good plan, but as a school committee, I, I think we cannot mandate this.
And how can we ensure that we're gonna find twenty-two people that are gonna come?
We don't know that, there's no question.
We're not.
We don't know that, but let me just say this though, the same way that you hire a recess or a lunch monitor, after a hundred and eighty days, they know those kids, they know them better sometimes than a lot of other people. It's the same person, Pal, for the entire year that you're gonna have.
But that's when they come in, a hundred eighty days with the same cohort of kids. We're having different cohorts, so we're having, we're having.
But it's the same number, no matter what, they still have to learn those kids.
I get it, but it, it's forty percent that they'll see those kids over a two-week period.
Okay, but they're gonna see them every day, for four days in a row, for a full day.
And then they're not gonna see them again.
Right.
For, for six days with a weekend in between, you know.
That, all, everybody is in the same, right.
But when we're talking about teachers, they're a special breed of people versus somebody that doesn't have the same repertoire.
How would that be different than a lunch and recess monitor?
That's why I'm saying the lunch and recess monitor are not a good fit either, like, I put that in my email and described that.
But you have to have someone to do that.
I get it, and some districts have the staff that work there do this all the time seamlessly, and they have better social-emotional health and wellbeing of their kids.
Well, it certainly could be a, certainly could be a possibility in some, but it cannot happen at certain levels. If you have a high school teacher who's teaching six periods, which by the way, is what's gonna happen this year.
Right.
So in addition in that schedule, I didn't mention that your teachers at the high school currently teach five, next year they're teaching six classes. They have one prep period and lunch. That's it.
But I'm sure that there's not like, I guess, maybe, maybe they're all scheduled that way, and so they're all having that same thing.
They all have six periods they teach, otherwise why are we paying them for a full day?
Well, sometimes in the past, we haven't had everybody scheduled the same, so if that's happening this year, that's one thing. I guess if we have any idle hands or any people that are not.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Fully.
But then, then we would have to negotiate that as an additional duty. If it's not, again, I don't know the language of your contract specifically, if it's not in your contract, if it says they can be assigned a duty, which I believe it probably does, but I'm, don't, I'm not a hundred percent positive, then it's what is a duty, and part of it goes back to what has been past practice. At the high school, the past practice has been lunch and bathroom.
That's why I asked the question of Mr. P about his schedule.
Yeah.
In my building, our teachers do these duties, but we have, we have a different schedule than what he has.
September.
It wouldn't work with his schedule.
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of points on the twenty-two potential positions. I'm not sure that that isn't a great job for a lot of people. It's a part-time, it's during the school day, it's mother's hours, gives them another connection. That's number one, my bigger concern is that some of our subs who are gonna take those jobs, those twenty-two positions, because then they're gonna have a consistent weekly income, and then we're not gonna have any subs when the teacher gets the fever or the cough and has to be out. So I think those are two things that we need to think about.
I couldn't agree more, I'm so sorry, September, you know, I just, I was gonna read a text from one of my current people who's excited about the potential to have that job next year.
Yeah, yeah.
And she just wrote, I miss those kids so much, I can't wait to get back, if it's longer, it'll be even better. So there are a lot of people, and they're, they're nice jobs, so.
Yeah, and I've talked to some subs who would love those jobs, so I think.
I'm gonna be able to fill five easily if I can.
So, back to Mr. Madu's point, if we have to go remote, right, do we have to pay unemployment if we cut those positions, or no?
Yes.
Yes.
So that puts us in a huge financial sling here, and it's gonna tax our, our town too. Can we take the two-hundred-something thousand dollars, and can we get some specialists? And then the teachers can have some free time scheduled in, and our kids can have more, and then our teachers pick up some more duties, but our kids have a more robust education, they have more curriculum opportunities, and then.
You wouldn't be able to do that across your district.
You have fourteen, you get four.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay.
I know, but four, we have four, like.
We have four buildings.
I get that, but like, we have one PE teacher that straddles between two schools. I get that, but like, we have one PE teacher that straddles between two schools. We have one, correct me if I'm wrong, we got a music teacher that straddles, straddles between two schools. So if we just hire two people right there, then we got two more specials that go between two schools, right? For our elementary schools, didn't we hear that elementary is where there's an issue of not having enough?
What are you going to use them for? You don't have them in a day, you don't have a need for them. You've already filled your day, the kids get the rotation of the specials with the split that you currently have, and that's the reason you split it is because they wouldn't have full schedules if you hired more than one. So what are you going to do with the, of that person? I would understand if you said, I'd rather hire pairs, but someone's going to have to do some of these, unless you tell us you don't want us to do any of these.
Right, but even pairs is like in my, I mean, my thought bubble even a little bit better because they could do more to support our students.
But then you probably wouldn't be able to hire them for thirteen fifty.
Right.
You'd be hiring them.
Then we get back in the same conundrum about, you know, benefits if we have to cut a position, I don't know.
I just wanted to say, as far as the unemployment is concerned, where this is a national situation, there has to be some concession made regarding percentages for unemployment, because this will put businesses out of business. So we're, there is no way that we're going to end up paying all this unemployment percentage based on all the dollars that have gone out, there's just no way, the government cannot do that. So I think the unemployment piece is probably secondary to our initial need to have a body to protect the safety of the kids.
And I get, I get the body to protect the safety of the kids, I'm not saying that we don't need people to protect our kids.
Do we have a motion on this already?
No.
No.
I'm just, we have bodies, we have teachers.
But we don't, because they teach.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, this is, this is a group discussion here. I think we've heard points, and now entertain a motion to approve the job description of the health and safety monitor across public schools.
It's a motion.
Second.
Do you want a second? Any further discussion?
Do you want, I'm sorry, that's not for me. I, I, you said any further discussion, I'm sorry, I was a school committee member like I used to be. Sorry.
Through a chaired Dr. Nash, we would like to add a point.
Well, if you want to change the number, and you would like us to try to hire fewer to begin with, then please, because we have, there is no number set other than, than I said, based on what I asked principals to give me what they thought would work in their buildings, but.
Actually, Dr. Nash, our vote, which is for the job description.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
We're not getting to budget, we're not getting to budget.
Okay. All right.
Just, just job.
Okay.
Just on job description, not on, not on how many, or I thought that just on this was piece of paper.
Yeah, prove this.
Sorry.
Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin. I'm sorry?
I said yes.
Okay. Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Canacchioli.
Yes.
And Mr. Coon, voting affirmative, job description has been approved. That's all we're at for that.
Is there a limit, though, can I ask that now? That you'd like me to look at, two per building? I mean, I, I don't want to go and hire twenty and tell you that it costs this much, if I, you know, they may very well.
Can we look at that on, on the twenty-fourth?
We can look at, I need, I would like to get these out. But we are going to meet Friday, this Friday.
Okay.
If you'd like remotely at two, we have a meeting scheduled.
Yes, we do.
I think we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Could I ask, I don't know if it's possible, but can we actually see a schedule of what this day, person's day might look like?
I can talk with the principals, you know.
Give us a vision for what they're doing.
Yeah, because I think we were talking about, it's not a full day. Yeah, I'm not sure if we can get it by Friday, but.
I'm sure they're busy.
Some of them are trying to be on vacation, it doesn't work, does it?
No. All right, um, Friday, two o'clock, okay, and we do have executive session later too. Um, Mrs. Griffin, you want the warrant? Actually, Dr. Nash, anything else? Hold on, Dr. Nash, you all set?
I think I am.
And then maybe a more time in the schedule, but she says it's not all scheduled.
All right, Mrs. Griffin.
Um, so we have a payroll warrant for this evening, August fifth, and Mrs. Forbes signed the first payroll.
July.
On July twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty, for ninety-six thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents. After that, I took over and signed the accounts payable warrant for July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, for twenty-seven thousand seven hundred one dollars and ninety-nine cents, and an accounts payable warrant for August fourth, twenty twenty, for twenty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents. I will be signing a payroll warrant for August sixth, twenty twenty, for a hundred one thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. And that is the warrants report for this evening.
Another request, Mrs. Forbes.
Oh my gosh, I just want to thank Helen too, one of our unsung heroes. We have thanked the administrators and the central office staff, I think we left out Helen's name, so Helen, I know you work in double time and a half, we get emails from you at all hours of the day and night. We've said so much, I have nothing more to say, thank you.
I thank everybody, and I thank our teachers in particular and the union for working so hard and, and listening to my, you know, outlandish ideas, maybe I'm probably making people's hearts pause, but I do want us to think outside the box, and this is the perfect time for us to kind of, you know, re-envision education for our students and do better for our district, not that we're not doing amazing things all the time. I think we're, we're outstanding, but I think we could always improve, and that's what education's always about. It's about growth, not just for our students, but for ourselves as professionals. So I want us to kind of think outside the box, especially now more than ever. The other thing that concerns me, and a request I have, it's more for our DPW and our police department, but I'm anticipating students walking more, and selfishly, this impacts my personal family and my neighbors. I live off of Rocky Hill, my kids cross that intersection right there in front of Oxford's in the DPW, there's a crosswalk. However, there's no flashing light, there's very, very poor signage, I would say like a hundred feet up the road. It's like a blind kind of curve as you cross. Frequently, I've heard, of course, from my own child and others, that cars don't stop right there, they just, they pick up speed, they start flying, and the kids will stand at the intersection. We actually had one child hit years ago, if you remember. It was a, not a good accident that happened right there, I want to say it was probably like eight or, eight or nine years ago. It's a scary place, it's scary for my family, it's scary for my kids in my neighborhood. I want there to be some type of flashing light, I want there's some type of sign for speed, and, you know, we don't have crossing guards there, and I'm not asking for such, but there's got to be some type of monitoring so our kids don't get hurt, it's just an accident waiting to happen. So that's pretty much it.
So also too, could we send that to DP, actually, entertain a motion, send a letter to DPW into-
I don't know if we have like a safety officer.
Safety officers, that goes, getting late to, the safety officer of OPD to look at it, to look at that and to do necessary mitigation as to the, the safety issues.
Yeah, I don't know if it's mile mark or a hundred eight, like right around there, I might be mixing it up, a hundred eighty or a hundred eight on Route twelve. It's right next to-
I know, it's right across from Oxford's, uh, Capitol Dining.
Yeah.
I, I do remember having crossing guards there in the past, I'm talking years ago, but I can certainly look into that as well. Putting a crossing guard there.
And I'm not advocating for a crossing guard there, you know, but I really honestly feel like there needs to be some type of flashing light or a light at that intersection, honestly, for cars getting out there too, it's, it's a nightmare, you know.
You know, Pal, I, I have to agree with you, and I see it more in the afternoon, when I come by groups of students walking home, and that, again, they're going to congregate in groups, walking home, and the speed of the vehicles going through there is not safe. Mr. Canacchioli and his principal, they probably noticed that, themselves quite a bit, that car bunker area, that, around that blind curve, all the way down the Rocky Hill Road, Methodist Church, fly right there.
And we have kids that are, you know, walking, Ed's at Millbury Ave, I can't remember.
Boulevard, yeah, that old area right there.
So it's right, it's right there that, you know, the kids cross over that Millbury Ave, and then you come up a leather like hundred feet or so, and then they usually cross across to get into those neighborhoods off, off of Rocky Hill.
Because there's no crosswalk on the car bunker side, correct?
Correct.
Correct, and there's no sidewalks.
I'm sorry, there's no sidewalk there.
Sidewalks, yeah, and so that's the problem, the kids have to cross once, and then walk down where there's sidewalks, and then they have to cross again back into the Rocky Hill neighborhood. We also have people coming up and down all the time with, you know, their brush disposal and stuff, and people that are not, you know, they don't mean to, they just don't notice the kids.
That's right.
So that's all, thank you.
All right. Mr. Burke.
I just want to acknowledge that, that I'm sure the comments tonight show that there is no plan that is going to please everyone, but I appreciate all of you and your robust debate tonight, and everybody feeling free to voice their opinions. I appreciate it, committee.
Yeah, I just agree, there's no perfect solution, I know people are working hard and people have different opinions, but difficult times, I think we all just got to stay together, let's not divide, unlike our country is at times, and just do what's in the best interest of kids, I know we all, again, might have differences of opinions, but ultimately we've got to keep that focus on them, their safety and our staff's safety. Thank you.
A couple of things in correspondence, I did a lovely card from Linda Forte. School committee, thank you for the lovely engraved clock. The children of Kingsley Oxford will always be in my best heart forever, it has been an amazing twenty years, especially this last one. Best Linda Forte. So, yes, we do, as, as traditional, as we do give out clocks for our retirees, also graduation, I thought, change of format was, outstanding job out of class.
It was beautiful.
Very little, if any, rehearsal, the procession was very nice going in there, Mr. Lujan's comments of, zip up your, zip them up, with the pictures. It was nice to see the class out there, and the behavior was excellent, the clapping, the speeches were nice, I thought, President Suzanne Lambert did a great job of really putting everything back into perspective, and we're, really where the class has gone over the forty, so, thank you everyone for that. We were all on attendance there, and then again, the remote learning plans. All right, so, at this stage, we'll be going into executive session. I'll actually, topics for future agenda, let me know, Helen, know. Next topic, our next regular meeting that were posted is on Monday, August twenty-fourth. We do have a special meeting on Friday, August seventh, two o'clock, and that will be remotely. So Friday, two o'clock, remote. And then executive session tonight, and under MGO, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and be noted, we'll be returning, we will be adjourning directly from executive session. So entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved in second, roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Canacchioli.
Yes.
I also vote yes, vowing affirmative during executive session.